Good morning, I'm checking my audio, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, just we'll get started in just a minute, so please, everybody just just stand by for a minute, it just takes a minute for everybody to get connected.
I understand.
Okay, it looks like everybody who was in the waiting room is now in the Zoom meeting. Oh wait, Mr. Voice is still, it says it's connecting to audio, so let me give it just, oh there we go. Alright, so now I think everybody is in. If any of you can turn on your video who have not done so, I would appreciate it, it is easier to participate if we have both audio and video for all of you, it looks like they're all, everyone's appearing. Okay, so first of all, good morning, my name is Alan Lilly, I'm the Presiding Hearing Officer of the State Water Resources Control Board's Administrative Hearings Office, and I will be the Hearing Officer today. We had a pre-hearing conference on May 11th, and I think all of you, or at least almost all of you participated in that, so you're at least somewhat familiar with our Zoom process. And just so you know, in the background, participating from my staff, we have Skylar Anderson, Amy Blunk, Kyle Woldridge, and Nicole Mullen, and of course, very happy to have all of them on board. So, and they will be handling a lot of the logistics as we go forward today. As I stated in the notice of this hearing, we have not ordered a court reporter, so the video and audio recording will be the official record for this proceeding. I will call on you to speak, and if you want to say something, and I haven't called on you, please let me know, you can either use the electronic hand racing feature in Zoom, or you can do it the old way, and just raise your hand in video, and I'll try to kind of keep an eye on all the, all your pictures, so we can do it that way. We've been doing this for a little over a year now, I think we're getting better, but obviously, we're still learning how to do these hearings by Zoom, I guess I will say the good news is, none of you had to drive from Garberville to Sacramento for this hearing, which I'm not sure how many hours it is, but I know it's quite a few, so hopefully, that makes this more convenient for all of you to participate. And I see you are keeping your microphones on mute when not speaking, which I appreciate, sometimes we get feedback if everyone has their, their microphones on. And then just the last thing for procedures, so please, address me as Mr. Lilly, and I will address you as Mr. or Miss with your last name. We don't, it's not a court proceeding, so we don't need to use your honor, but I do like to keep it formal. I know a lot of you, I haven't ever met any of you before in person, but I know a lot of you know each other, so you're probably used to talking on first name basis, but for this proceeding, let's, let's keep it just a little more formal. So with that, I'm going to go forward with the lists of the parties I have, who have filed exhibits and testimony, and notices of intent to appear, and plan to participate in the hearing. So when I call your name, the name of your party, please let me know who will be appearing on behalf of that party. So I'll start with the Garberville Sanitary District, who's appearing today for Garberville Sanitary District, and please go off mute when you speak.
Jenny Short and Colette Metz will also be appearing at 11 o'clock when she takes the break from her other obligation.
Okay. And I do notice, Mr. Emerson, you are here as well, and I believe you're the General Manager of Garberville Sanitary District, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And are you going to be, I mean, you certainly are, I have no problem at all with your listening in and watching, but are you going to be participating as well today?
Only as questions are asked, but probably not.
Okay, and that, that is fine. Alright, and I know there was an attorney who had appeared for the Garberville Sanitary District, but I guess he does not participate today, is that correct?
We do not intend to have him participate live unless it becomes necessary at some point, he has provided me with a little bit of input that I'll use while I'm going along in this, but I don't expect to have him on the call.
Okay, and that's fine, I have his name on the notice of intent to appear, oh, Russ Gads, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So he will not be, probably not be appearing in person. Alright, so next I'll move to the Southern Humboldt Community Park, who is here today for Southern Humboldt Community Park?
Morning, Mr. Lilly, Laura Cochran.
Great, good, good morning, Ms. Cochran. And so I take it you're the only person for the Southern Humboldt Community Park today?
Yes, we have Board Members Carolyn Hino Barasa and Megan Joyce also on.
I'm sorry, could you, I see Carolyn, what's your last name? You have to go off mute and tell us.
Hino Barasa.
Can you spell that, we just want to put it on the, the Zoom, so we have it, so how do you spell it slowly for us?
H-I-N-O.
H-I-N-O, okay.
Hyphen, and then B as in boy, O-U-R-A, S as in Sam, S as in Sam, A.
Oh, so Hino Barasa.
Correct.
Okay, so I'll ask my staff, Mr. Anderson, I believe can change it so it has your full name instead of just your first name.
Thank you.
Then is there another director for the park?
Yeah, I'm here, Megan Joyce, I'm a board member.
Good morning, Ms. Joyce.
Morning.
Okay, and then for Redway Community Services District, who is here this morning?
Diane Griffiths, I'm a board member.
And then please state your name again slowly.
Diane, D-I-A-N, Griffiths, G-R-I-F-F-I-T-H.
Okay, Diane Griffiths, okay, good morning, Ms. Griffiths, and is anybody else here this morning for the Community Services District?
Yeah, my name is Cody Cox, I'm the General Manager, I will be sitting in.
Okay, that's great, Mr. Cox, and you might want to just, I can see all of Ms. Griffiths and just barely you, so yeah, there you go. It's just, they're perfect, you might as well both be on screen if you're going to appear today, thank you. Alright, and then Mr. Voice, Edward Voice, I see you here. Just go off mute. Yep, try again, it's not off, going off mute yet.
There we go. That works. Yes, I'm here this morning.
Okay, great, good morning. Yeah, I, I certainly am guilty of speaking while I'm on mute, so if that happens, I'll let you know. Alright, and then Ms. Kristin Vogel, I see you're here?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Lilly.
Okay, and I'll ask my staff if they can change the display, right now it just says Kristin, we'll see if we can get that to say Kristin Vogel. It just helps for the recording to keep track. And then Linda Sutton filed some paper, I don't see her, is Ms. Sutton's over there with the RCSD banner? Okay, so that's fine, good morning, Ms. Sutton. And that's, that's fine, alright, I think, is there anybody else who wants to participate today, I see Mr. Hill, Jesse Hill? Do you want to say anything today, or are you just observing? You have to go off mute, though.
There we go.
Yeah.
I would just be participating if there's a short amount of time, I could say a brief comment, but I'm mostly here observing.
Okay, and that's certainly fine, and we have an opportunity for what are called policy statements, which means you can testify, you're not under oath, you're not subject to cross-examination, but the, the eye of the board can consider your statement, so at, at the appropriate time, I'll let you know, five minutes maximum, but you certainly can do that if you want to.
Okay, that sounds great.
You don't have to, but I'll give you that option, you can also file a written policy statement instead if you want to. Anyway, we're glad to have you, if, for people who just want to observe without participating at all, they can go to the YouTube channel, but it's fine if you want to do it this way. Okay, I do see one more person, actually two more have showed up, Matthew's iPhone, is there anybody there who wants to say anything? You have to go off mute if you do, and if you want to just listen, that's fine, oh, there we go.
I'll, I'll just be observing, thank you.
Okay, that's fine, and then I have 777-223-4569, do you want to say anything this morning?
No, I'll be just observing too.
Okay, and that's fine, and as I say, if either of you want, you can shift over to the YouTube channel, but we don't, we don't have, we're not crashing our system, so it's fine if you want to listen in through this Zoom, Zoom link instead as well. Alright, well with that, we will proceed as discussed in the hearing notice. And I first want to just talk about exhibits, and then we'll get to policy statements, and then we'll get to the parties' presentations of their cases. We have received exhibit files from all of the parties, and we posted all those files to the AHOFTP page, which is on the Water Board's FTP site, we did provide information on how to access that in the hearing notice, and I hope you've all been able to access those exhibits, but all the exhibits should be up there. Our hearing notice directed parties to mail two paper copies of each exhibit to my office, and we did not receive those from anybody, so, trust me, it is in there, but it's on page 17, and you may not have noticed that, so I will, I do have, I will also access the AHOFTP page to look at exhibits, so if you see me looking to the right, I'm looking at my other, I'm still involved in the hearing, but I'm looking at my other screen where I have the exhibits posted, so in case you're wondering, I'm not watching TV or something, but that's just the easiest way for me to, to look at the exhibits. And, and when you're talking about a specific exhibit, if you ask me, I will ask Ms. Mullen, and she can do a screen share, so the exhibit is posted on the screen for us all to look at, and that certainly is the easiest way to go forward. So we will do that. Mr. Anderson did send a memo on June 7th, which described, we re-labeled some of the exhibits, some of the documents were filed without exhibit numbers, so we gave them exhibit numbers, it just works best for us for every document to have an exhibit number, so, so we did that. And you'll see, we some, we added some zeros in front of some of them, so GSD1 became GSD01, and we did that so that for the FTP page, the exhibits all end up being in numerical order, otherwise, it goes from 1 to 11, 12, 13, and then to 2, and so forth, so by putting the zeros in front, they're in numerical order, which makes it a little easier for all of us to follow. So with that, and if we get to each party, if there are any issues with your exhibits, we can, we can certainly talk about those as we need to. Now, there's one other thing, there is a folder on the FTP page, which, and I don't know if, I hope you've been able to find it, just a minute, I, my computer logged me out, I'm logging back in, there it is. And it's, just let me get to Garberville here. Hearing documents, there's a folder with about 14 files in it, which are called, which we called Files Uploaded to AHOFTPs To Without Exhibit Numbers, and we can't tell who filed these, so I'm just going to go through these slowly, and if any of you filed any of them, let us know, and then we'll try to give them appropriate numbers and put them in, in the folder for your exhibits.
There were a few that RCSD had filed, we, I do apologize, we were under the gun and a bit out of time when we were filing them, so some of those are going to be ours, I do apologize in advance.
Okay, so Mr. Cox, thank you for letting me know, can you tell me the file names of those, and we'll just take care of them right away, that will be helpful. Or, or the other thing is, I can just go through these, and then you can, you can let me know when, which ones are yours.
I think that would be best, I appreciate that, thank you, sir.
Okay, and there are 14 of them, so just bear with me, I don't think this will take too long. The first one, the file name says 6B underscore GSD hyphen service hyphen extension hyphen request to, to waive fees, does anybody know who filed that?
I believe that was me.
Okay. And Mr. Voice, did you also file that as one of your exhibits or in your EV series, is this a duplicate of that?
No.
Okay, so I will ask my staff to label that as exhibit EV, and whatever the next number is in order, just so we have it in your folder.
Okay, thank you.
And is that the same for 7A GSD service extension with attachments?
Yes.
Okay, so we will do that, and then the next one says EIR Southern Humboldt Community Park, November 2016, is that yours as well?
I don't believe so.
Okay, and I think that may be a duplicate of a file that's in the Sequa files, that, that the Garberville Sanitary District filed, we'll check if it's a duplicate, we don't need to relabel it, does anybody else know if they uploaded that? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on.
Mr. Lilly, this is Jenny, Mrs. Short. This is not a duplicate of the one that GSD uploaded, because this is only a small excerpt out of that very large document. So the one that's in the Sequa folder that we uploaded is the complete document, not just this one attachment.
Okay, and does anybody know if they uploaded these EIR excerpts? If, if not, we'll just leave it here with that explanation, but obviously, the full document may be better for relying on. Okay, next one, email from GSD September 3, 2020, Bulk Water Definition, does anybody know who uploaded that?
I believe I'm guilty of that.
Okay, that's fine, Mr. Voice, we'll, we'll put that in your exhibits as well. I, I'm assuming Mr. Anderson is taking notes here, and I don't know that we'll do it during the hearing, but we'll do it after the hearing as necessary. And then the next one says Exhibit For Example 0602, 2021, that goes on 415353, is that one of yours too, Mr. Voice?
No.
Okay, is anybody, let me click on it, see if I can open it and see what it says it is. It, oh, it's, it's two pages of stream flow data for the looks like the South Fork Eel River stream flow.
Is that from the, is that from the USGS?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be from RCSD.
Okay, so we will add that to the Redway CSD files as well. Next one, it's, it says Garberville SD discusses expanded water use and larger meter for water park connection, I think that was an email, does anybody know who filed that? See if I can, let me open it here.
Mr. Lilly, this is a duplicate of one of Ed Voice's exhibits, he has a version of this that's highlighted.
Okay, so we'll check, and if it's just a duplicate, we don't need to relabel it, so Mr. Voice, does that sound familiar to you? It's an email from-
No, but, anything is possible.
Yeah, well, there are a lot of documents here, it's an email from Kristin Vogel to Ed Voice dated April 28, 2021, which forwarded an August 29.
That is a duplicate, that is a duplicate.
Okay, so we don't need to relabel that then. Okay. Next one. It's an email, this may be in the same boat, it says, I don't know, that's the one we just did, that was the email concerning, that's why I like to have labels. Next one just says GSD hyphen SHCP by L. Sutton. And let me open that, see if I can tell what that is.
It's a duplicate as well, and, yeah, it has the same email as one of his exhibits.
Okay, this is a handwritten page actually from Linda Sutton, Ms. Sutton, it looks like it's a two-page letter, and then there is a three-page, looks like letter or memo with highlighting on it, Ms. Sutton, did you file, upload that to the?
I, because I'm not electronically connected, I did not, I was not able to do any of this work. I did always include in my letters, previous letters that had been written.
Okay, does anybody else know if they uploaded this, it's a letter dated June 1, 20, it says June 1, 21, from, it's a two-page letter from the Sutton, does anybody else know if they uploaded that?
Did you upload it?
Yeah.
Oh, um, yeah, our office manager uploaded that, so that's going to be for Linda Sutton, we uploaded it for Linda Sutton, yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Anderson, I know you're taking notes here, please label that as the next of Linda Sutton's exhibits, I think you have LS for those. And let me see where we go, we're just about done here, thank you all for your patience, I think the next one may be a copy of the same thing. It looks like, yeah, the next one's a duplicate, so we only need to do that once. Alright, next we have GSD Comments Randall Sand and Gravel, April 20, April 9, 2021.
I believe that's mine.
Oh, that's, it says, that's the title, but it's actually another copy of the same letter from Ms. Sutton, so we don't need to
Oh.
do that again.
I, I don't think that's true, the one I downloaded off the FTP site is the letter GSD wrote to the zoning administrator.
Hang on, maybe I clicked on the, I certainly am capable of clicking on the wrong file here, let me try again. Okay, you're right, yeah, I clicked before, so this is April 9, 2021, letter from GSD to Humboldt County Zoning Administrator, does anybody know who uploaded that?
That, that would be me.
Okay, so Mr. Voice, well, again, we're just labeling these now, that's all we're doing. We'll label that as the next one in the Ed Voice EV exhibits.
Sounds good, thank you.
Alright, we're getting there, four more to go here, let me clear and upload. The next one's 11 megabytes, so it's taking me just a minute, it says Humboldt INDIE Eel River Information, with a number after it. It's, it's 11 megabytes, so it's not just uploading right away here, we may have to come back to that one.
It is a newspaper article, article from the Humboldt Independent, that somebody scanned and uploaded.
Okay, does anybody know who, if they uploaded that?
That was RCSD that submitted that.
Okay.
And that's it, and that's it for us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cox, I, I can't open it, but we'll, we'll go ahead and put that in the RCSD exhibit, sequence. Okay, next, SCHDEH GSD Water Connection Mitigation, October 2019. This is a letter dated October 25, 2019, from Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services to South, Southern Humboldt Community Park. Two pages, does anybody know who uploaded that?
That would be me.
Okay, Mr. Voice, we'll put that in the Ed Voice series?
Mr. Lilly, it's also already numbered EV21.
Oh, okay, so Mr. Anderson, please check that, and if it's already, if it's already been labeled as EV21, obviously, we don't need to have a, another copy of the same thing. Okay, so then we have a letter dated May 14, 2020, from the park, Southern Humboldt Community Park, to Redway Community Services District. Two pages, does anybody know who uploaded that one, is that you, Mr. Voice, or?
Yeah, I think it's a duplicate.
Okay, we'll check, if it's a duplicate, we won't relabel it, and if it, I mean, we won't give it a new number, if it is not, we will. Last one, and I'm going to pause and see whether Mr. Anderson's gotten all of this. The last one is, it looks like a, a one-page map, which is a figure, it's figure 3-11. It's dated 2014, I assume it's from one of the EIRs, and it's a map called Water Infrastructure, and it appears to be a map of the park, water infrastructure within the park, does anybody know who uploaded that one?
I think I did, but I don't know if it's a duplicate or not.
Okay.
It's, it's also EV20.
Okay, so it is a duplicate.
Okay, so I'm going to stop for a minute here, that's all of them, and just see, I'm going to check with, make sure we've got all of this done now. Okay, let me just check and see if, just, I'm going to just tell you what, let me just pause for a couple of minutes here, and just make sure that my staff has, has gotten those all in order, I just want to make sure if they have any, I'll just ask them if they have any follow-up questions. I think I'm getting a message here, hang on, this is what happens when we all are working from different locations, but we're getting there. Bear with me. Okay, wait, there is one. One question here, which one? Okay, there's one that says here, I think we have to go back and see, there's one that we, Mr. Anderson wasn't sure. There's one where it's about the sixth one down, oh, this is the letter from, or this is the Mr. Voice forwarded an email, or it's, Mr. Voice received an email from Ms. Vogel on April 28th of this year, which forwarded an August 29, 2019 email from Mr. Voice to Mr. Emerson, Mr. Voice, was that your, one of your exhibits as well, I believe it was?
You'd have to read a little bit more to see what the crux of the email is.
Okay, it says, Dear GSD, I have a couple more questions concerning the email I received from my public, California Public Record Act request, and I think you sent it, looks like you sent it to Mr. Emerson in April, in August of 2019.
I think, I think Jenny has an answer.
I do, so you have two different emails there, one is also, so the, 1, 2, 3, the sixth one down is a duplicate of EV4, and the seventh one down is a duplicate of EV5.
Yeah, that's true.
There's two different emails there.
Okay, alright, so it doesn't look like we need to give these additional exhibit names or numbers then.
Yeah, you can just delete them.
Yeah, okay, we will, we will try to clean it up a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah, alright, so let me just double check, I think that was the last question I had from my gang here, my staff, excuse me, I shouldn't be- Okay. Okay, there's the one called the the 11 megabyte Eel River Gauge, I think, Mr. Cox, you said that was yours, right?
Yeah, that's correct, that's a five-year period graph there from the South Fork Eel River, the Miranda Gauge. USGS gauge, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, first, we're having a little trouble, I think it may be open, we can't renumber it now, but we'll make sure to list that as a Redway CSD exhibit. Okay, I think that takes care of that. If we need to, we'll circle back during the break, I'll check with my staff, they're very good, but if they missed anything, we will, they'll let me know, and then I'll ask you for follow-up questions, but I think we've got that in a way we can get them in order eventually. So, at this point, we will go forward to policy statements. We usually do that first, because sometimes people who give policy statements don't want to participate in the entire hearing, and that way they can make their statement, and then go on with other activities in their lives, and of course, they can listen to the rest of the hearing if they want to. But that's just in case you're wondering, that's why we usually do those at the beginning. Uh, but that's just in case you're wondering. That's why we usually do those at the beginning. Um, as I said before, uh, they're, they're not given under oath. Um, and they're, the people who give them are not subject to cross-examination. Uh, we don't, do not base any of the findings of fact in our orders on policy statements, but they are certainly something uh, that I and the board members can consider, uh, as we're going through our deliberative process. So I'll start with you, Mr. Hill, if you're still there. I, you've turned off your camera, but uh, since you volunteered before, or said before you wanted to give a, a short policy statement, um, now's a good time if you can unmute and turn your camera back on, if we can get you back, hopefully.
Thank you. Can you just give me one moment?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're getting you a tenue way. You may have to get a little better connection. Or your connection may have to reboot. Um, what, what, while we're waiting for Mr. Hill to hopefully reconnect, is, is there anybody else who is going to be uh, giving a policy statement this morning? And again, as I said before.
Doing a couple of things here.
All right. Okay. Well, wait, we are.
Have a question, Miss.
Yeah, Miss.
To answer your last question, I, I had a question about the last thing you mentioned. Is there gonna be a space for similar type of comment at the end of the hearing? Uh, I would call it a closing comment, policy statement. That's not gonna be subject to an oath.
Well, Ms. Vogel, for parties, which, and you are a party, you can give an opening statement when, when you start your case, which would be like a policy statement. Uh, to answer your question, at the end of the hearing, um, I'm, I'm going to have people file written closing briefs rather than closing statements, but, but you will have an opportunity to give a statement if you would like to. It'll be later on, but trust me, we will get to you, and you will be able to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, Mr. Hill, it looks like we've got you in video now and audio, so please go ahead, and as I said before, please limit yourself to five minutes or less.
Okay, thanks so much. Yeah, I'll be very brief. Um, I'm actually one of the members of the Board of Directors at the Southern Humboldt Community Park. Citizen of Southern Humboldt County, but also as a board member. And I just wanted to voice my, my strong support for the ability of the, of the community park to get public water. Um, there's a very limited amount drinking water fountains in the Southern Humboldt area, including the town of Garberville, I believe, has maybe one. And, um, the community park is not a highly, highly trafficked park that does get a substantial amount of of use from the public. You know, a lot of recreating, as in walking their dogs, riding their bikes. Uh, there's a, currently a disco, of course. And yes, that, that traffic hope, we hope for it to increase in the future. Um, but the, the amount of water use at the park to me is, um, is relatively low for the, the very high, uh, relative gain. Um, the advantage of having, you know, safe drinking water for, for the public to use and enjoy, and that was my basic statement. Then in a, in the concern over the, the amount of water we all have in this Northern California region. Um, I do believe that the the Southern Humboldt Community Park is a very appropriate and very beneficial, um, recipient of, of this public water that's under consideration right now. So I just wanted to add my voice to the, to discussion and state that. That's about it.
All right, well, well, thank you for your statement, uh, uh, this morning, Mr. Hill, and, and of course, as I said before, please feel free to, uh, listen to the rest of the hearing, either, uh, through the Zoom, uh, connection or through the YouTube channel, if you want, whichever way you wanna do that.
Thank you so much.
Any other policy statements at this point? I don't see anybody else who is not participating as a party. So, um, hearing now, we will move forward. Um, and let me just describe how we will handle the cases in chief, uh, for each party. This is discussed in the hearing notice, uh, but I'll just summarize that. Uh, for each party, uh, they, the party can give an opening statement, which is, in answer to Ms. Vogel's questions, is not subject to cross-examination uh, for maximum of five minutes. Um, and then after that, I will administer the oath uh, to each witness that the party has called. And then the witnesses can give summaries of their testimony. Again, we don't want the them to read their entire testimony. I, I have read all the written testimony that has been submitted. Um, but, uh, we do give an opportunity for, uh, summaries of the testimony. Um, and I'm going to allow thirty minutes per party, which should be more than sufficient uh, for the oral summaries of the written statements. And then after that, um, all the other parties to the hearing, one at a time, of course, uh, may ask cross-examination questions of the witness. Uh, and again, please keep in mind, at that point, it's asking the witness to answer questions. It's, it's not when you testify about what you wanna say, but it's just asking them questions. Uh, sometimes there's confusion, uh, between the two, and I'll, we'll make sure we try to keep that split up. Um, and then if appropriate, um, there can be redirect if the, the person who called the witness thinks they need to have, uh, ask any further questions, they may. Uh, and then if, if I have any questions, I may ask the witness questions. Um, and then after that, we will handle the uh, exhibits that each party has submitted and decide which ones to offer to accept into evidence and which ones not to accept into evidence. And we'll do that for each of the six parties, um, in order, uh, and go through that. And then when we're done with all of that, if there's any rebuttal, anything that has come up and somebody feels they need to respond to something that somebody else has said, uh, they will have uh, an opportunity to do that. Um, and then after that, as I said, I, I plan to have, ask the parties, if you want, to file written, uh, closing briefs, uh, and I will set the schedule and the page limits for that, and we will, we'll get to that. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna start. The order of proceeding uh, for the cases in chief will be, we will have uh, Garberville Sanitary District go first, since it is the entity that filed the petitions to change the water right license and permits that are involved in this hearing. Um, then I will follow with the Southern Humboldt Community Park. Then the Redway Community Services District, then Mr. Voice, and Miss, Miss Vogel, and then Miss Sutton, uh, in, in that order. So, before we get started, does anybody have any questions about these hearing procedures? And, you know, obviously, if questions come up as we go, we'll, we'll handle them, but does anyone have any questions now about the hearing procedures? Okay. Excuse me. All right, so we will go to you, Ms. Short, for Garberville Sanitary District's uh, presentation. Uh, first of all, uh, do you want to make an opening statement before, uh, you start your testimony?
I wasn't sure how this was gonna work, so I have mine a little bit broken up 'cause I thought we were, everybody was gonna do opening statements, and then everybody was gonna do testimony. So I'll just go ahead and read what I have for my opening statement, and then I can move directly into my testimony.
Okay, and, and it, it's a little confusing since you're both giving the opening statement and the testimony. Um, um, but that's okay. That, that'll be the same for everybody else as well.
I know. All of the parties are the same.
Statement, it's just more or less your arguments, but it's not your, your testimony of your facts. So if you can try to split it up between the two, that would, I would appreciate that. So please go ahead, and, and just so you know, I, I just find it easier to have each party give opening statements and then testify, just sort of focus on each party one at a time. I mean, obviously, I, you know, different people do it different ways, but that's the way I, I'm going to do it today. So please go ahead.
Okay. Well, keep in mind that this is an engineer speaking, not an attorney, so I'm struggling through the processes.
I have great, even though I'm not an engineer, I have great respect for engineers, so please go ahead.
Oh, so I just wanted to, to say good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to talk to you about this. Um, we have, I just wanted to clarify for the record that the district did send two paper copies of all of the exhibits and the exhibit letter, and we have a, a receipt showing that they be, had been received by you guys, so I'm surprised that you don't actually have them.
Well, I, I apologize. I, I'll, I'll tell you the fact that we have almost nobody working in our building has something to do with that, but thank you for sending them. I'm sure they'll show up at some point, so please go.
We just wanted to make sure you knew that we had attempted to meet all the criteria in your instructions.
Okay.
So you do have before you thousands and thousands of pages of analysis that supports the requested change in place of use. Um, the district felt like this was gonna be a fairly simple and straightforward request to reconnect the park's water for, or the park's property for water service. Um, I think that Michael Richardson, the supervising planner at Humboldt County, said it best in his email response to LAPCO when he said, quote, "The proposed new water service provision from GSD to the Southern Humboldt Community Park is of such a minor nature that it does not raise any major issues for our agency," end quote. "The request before you to change the POU so that we can reestablish water service to the park is for such a small amount of water. These twenty units a month is a mere tenth of a percent of the face value of our license and permit. Even if the park had a month that went over to the disputed thirty units, we're still talking about a tenth of a percent of the total. Our governor has stated time and again what a basic human right it is to have drinkable water. Yet these four protesters stand up against this basic right being given to the people living in the residences and working at the park. The caretakers, the one administrative staff member, drinking fountains that can be used at the children's playground and, and at the trailheads to the park. Garberville experiences high temperatures in the summer, and available drinking water is essential at public recreation facilities under these conditions. What should be a simple approval has become an extended and expensive process to allow the people already living and using the park to have access to pot, potable water. The district asks that you review all the evidence given today and promptly move forward with recommending approval of the modification of our place of use with no other changes to the terms of our license and permit. Thank you."
All right, thank you. So let, let's go forward uh, to exhibits. And I, I would ask you to clarify. I, we've received, received electronically so far, and paper hopefully at some point. Exhibits GSD one through thirteen. And then also the documents which have the SEQA number, sorry, SEQA one through SEQA twenty-two, and I assume you've you filed both of those sets of exhibits. Is that correct?
Um, what happened is when I was coordinating with the, the division staff that was going to process this petition, I asked them if they wanted me to print out all of the environmental documents in paper forms and submit them with the application for the, the petition for the change in place of use. And they said, no, they would prefer that I put them onto a DVD and it, and just print out the main pages, like the notices of determination. And then, 'cause they didn't want a stack of three or four inches of paper, and so that's what I went ahead and did. But when I went through and reviewed the documents that were shown as the administrative um, record for the application submitted, none of the SEQA stuff that it was, had been included on that DVD was in the FTP site. So I brought that up at the hearing, and so I went ahead and pulled out the DVD that I had in my files from having submitted it. And I applied your instructions for how to mark them so that they would be easier to use, and then I uploaded those as separate SEQA exhibits. Um, the district didn't necessarily have any intention of referring to all those exhibits, but we felt like for you to have a complete SEQA record was important before you made a decision.
All right, well, thank you for that clarification. And, um, and just so you know, I don't know exactly what happened, but I think I know. Uh, the Division of Water Rights is a whole separate department within the State Water Resources Control Board. Um, we get their paper files from the Water Rights Records Unit, and then we have scanned the ones that we think are pertinent and, um, put those into our administrative record. Um, for whatever reason, we didn't get the DVD. Either it was, it was buried in one of their files, or it was not in the public, uh, files that we got. So I do appreciate your doing that and explaining to me what you've done, um, 'cause it is certainly important for the State Water Board as a SEQA responsible agency to have these SEQA documents in the record. So uh, we will put them in the record. As necessary, we can take official notice of them. They are um, official acts by various public agencies. Uh, so we will have them in the record for that purpose, but we won't, we won't treat them as being formally submitted by GSD as exhibits, uh, then. So with that, um, your testimony, your written testimony is exhibit GSD twelve. Um, and then it references, uh, some of the other, uh, GSD exhibits as well. So we will start with that. So first of all, we have to give you the oath. So Ms. Short, please raise your right hand, if I can see you. There you go. Do you swear or affirm, under penalty of perjury, that the testimony you will give in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. All right, so you may go ahead, so let me just ask you, is GSD tw- exhibit GSD twelve, uh, your written testimony for this hearing?
It is.
So that will be accepted into evidence as your written testimony. And now, uh, you may summarize this, and as I said before, uh, you have a total of thirty minutes. I think you can probably do it in a lot less than that, but that thirty minutes will apply both to your testimony, and then also the testimony of Ms. Metz, who is the other witness that GSD is calling for this hearing. Uh, so please go ahead and, and provide your summary of your written testimony.
I just wanna confirm that I assumed that you have read all of this written testimony prior to this hearing in the summary that I've prepared, because it's fairly brief. Is that an accurate assumption?
I have read your GSD twelve, which is sixteen pages long.
Okay.
I, you said a summary. I don't, I'm not aware of any summary of that, any written summary.
I just prepared a summary of it with the idea that you had already read, read all the details.
Yes, yeah, I have read it, and it's been posted to the uh, F T P site, so everyone else has had an opportunity to read it as well. So that's why a summary will be sufficient.
Okay. So, for those of you that don't know, I've worked for GSD since two thousand nine, and I've been, been involved in, um, most of the processes and projects that have been undertaken by the district since then. Um, I oversaw the two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen preparation of the initial study mitigated negative declaration for this annexation project. I was also the one that started doing the GIS mapping that resulted in us even identifying the fact that we had a whole bunch of properties that were being served that were outside of our jurisdictional boundary, and a few properties that were actually outside of the place of use as well. And that mapping is what resulted in the beginning of this annexation project. The park was one of those properties that had been served by the Garberville Water Company, which we purchased prior to nineteen ninety-four. Um, I also prepared all the petitions in two thousand thirteen that went to the Water Board for the annexation project, which were subsequently approved. Um, I've done most of the coordination with the park over the years on their historic service connection, and I authored the conditions that we placed in the letters to the park and in the, the initial study back in two thousand thirteen. I've done all the coordination for the subsequent requests to reinstate their service once their EIR was completed, and I also have processed the out-of-agency water service approval with LAPCO in two thousand nineteen. I was the one that prepared the petition that went to you guys in two thousand nineteen as well. It, for me, it seems like it's kind of been a bit of an unending process to get potable water back to the park residents and to be able to provide that potable water to the park users. We've been completely supportive of delaying that process until after they did their EIR, because we agreed with some of the public comments we received in two thousand thirteen that we needed to know more about what the park was gonna do out there before we extended the water service to them. Um, there's been dozens and dozens of public hearings and public board meetings where people's input has been received and considered on this issue. We've made adjustments along the way based upon the input that we received. The current protesters have all had the opportunity, and they have, uh, provided public comments into each of the hearing processes. Their concerns have been heard and considered by not only GSD, but also by Humboldt LAPCO, the Humboldt County Planning Commission, and the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. Each agency that's listened to them and considered them has gone ahead and moved forward with approving the necessary actions to allow the park to use their property as a public park. The sequan analysis and the public input process for this property is extensive. The request for the park to reinstate water service to their existing residents' outbuildings and to add drinking water fountains instead of building a water treatment facility on their own property next door to ours was again analyzed by LAPCO in the two thousand nineteen addendum. LAFCO has already approved this project to be served as an out-of-agency connection and did not deem annexation at this juncture to be the best option. These proceedings are only related to the place of use, not whether the protesters think that LAFCO was wrong in not requiring an annexation of the entire park. The reality from our perspective for this request is that the park already has an unlimited riparian water right that they're currently using to provide water to the existing residents, to the administrator's office, and to the outbuildings on their property. This is the same water source that they're using to irrigate all of the crops that they grow out there. The request before you merely places or replaces, excuse me, a portion of the raw untreated water that's diverted by the park to those residences with an allotment of treated water from GSD. GSD diverts this water about twenty-six hundred feet downstream from the park's intake. Our CSD's intake is miles downriver from GSD's intake. GSD has plenty of water source capacity to provide service to the park far in excess of what's being authorized by us. This has been documented each year in the Water Source Capacity Report that's prepared for our Board of Directors to review. GSD's board made a decision to limit the amount of water that was allocated to the park because we chose we closely manage this limited water resource, and we want to keep some of this in reserve for future projects and also to cover the variations in annual demand. This is why we chose the to process this service as an out-of-agency connection with LAFCO instead of an annexation. With an annexation, we don't have the authority to limit the monthly consumption the way that we do in an out-of-agency service. In LAFCO's two thousand nineteen addendum to our SEQA document, they stated in their summary of findings that it's plausible that GSD could supply all six hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight gallons of water per year that the park would need for potable use for the future expansion contemplated in the two thousand sixteen EIR. And they go on to say that even with that higher level of service from GSD, that it would not result in impacts more than those previously addressed in the two thousand sixteen EIR. GSD's choice to limit the quantity for service to this property should not become a condition in our permit or license. It was our management's choice, and LAFCO concurred, and we believe that that choice should remain at the GSD and LAFCO level. We fully understand that we can only service facilities that are within the approved POU without processing a subsequent change in place of use. And we clearly laid this out in the Water Service Agreement between ourselves and the park in section five point four. The district believes that the draft license and permit transmitted by the Administrative Hearings Office should not include condition number eleven. And we believe that it should also contain a cleaned up final version of the place of use map that I prepared. It was intended to be a draft. None of the rest of the conditions in terms of the diversion in our two thousand thirteen license nor permit need to be altered for this request. The existing license and permit are consistent with our lake and stream bed alteration agreement with fish and wildlife. They already determined, this is the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. They already determined that the existing conditions in our license and permit mitigate any concerns for fish and wildlife that are dependent upon the river. Also, while the district does not oppose in concept the change that you have in the total annual diversion allowed that was made to term number six in the draft license and permit that was attached to the hearing notice. We believe that for this change to be made, the Water Board should be converting the permit into a license, not decreasing the face value of the permit without converting it. The district notified the Water Board that this permit needed to be converted to a license on March twenty-eighth of two thousand thirteen in a letter to Barbara Eboy when we withdrew our request for an extension of time. So far, nothing appears to have been done to complete this effort by the Water Board. There's hundreds of people in the Southern Humboldt Community that support and use the park. You've received letters and petitions documenting the support from the public and confirming that providing safe potable water to the park is in the public's interest. In summary, please move forward with the district's request to add these eighteen acres within the four hundred and fifty acre part property to our place of use so that we can reconnect the park for potable water service. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Short. And as I as I mentioned in my email yesterday, we will allow Ms. Metz to testify at eleven AM, accommodate her schedule on that. I'll say I was glad that she was available sometime today, because I think we may be able to wrap up this hearing today, I hope so.
We really appreciate that, it it's a, it makes it so that she can can testify to her own testimony.
Yeah, we normally have all the parties' witnesses do their summaries, and then we go to cross-examination, but we will do this sequentially. So with that, I will proceed to allow cross-examination questions. Let me just check my notes here, make sure I got this right. And as, again, just as a reminder, this is time for questions, not the time for the questioners to testify, that will come later. So first of all, Ms. Cochran for Southern Humboldt Community Park, do you have any cross-examination questions for Ms. Short?
I do not, Mr. Muller, thank you.
All right, Mr. Cox for Redway CSD, do you have any questions for Ms. Short on cross-examination?
It's going to be Diane.
Okay. And that's Diane Griffith. Ms. Griffith, please go ahead with cross-examination questions for Ms. Short.
Thank you. In your written testimony relies upon and cites to the LAFCO two thousand nineteen addendum to the two thousand thirteen initial study and mitigated negative declaration exhibit SEQA dash eighteen, quoting the following statement. "As verified in this addendum, the two thousand thirteen IS slash MND analyzes and the conclusions of analysis and the conclusions remain current and valid. The proposed service extension would not cause new significant effects not identified in the two thousand thirteen IS MND, nor increase the level of..."
Excuse me, Ms. Griffith, there's got to be a question here, I'm not going to allow you to just read. You need to shorten this down to a question for Ms. Short.
Okay.
And if possible, tell me what page you're looking at, that would be helpful.
If you if you have the SEQA, you have the SEQA exhibit number, we can put it up on the screen if you do.
It says SEQA exhibit eighteen.
Okay, let's put up SEQA, give us a moment, Ms. Muller will put up SEQA, it just helps us all if we have it on the screen, so we're all on the same page, literally on the same page. So we'll put up SEQA eighteen.
What page of my testimony are you reading from?
There's no page over.
There's page at the bottom.
Your testimony on from page ten and eleven through sixteen.
Okay, all right, hang on just a second, let's, everybody just stop. Let me get, so we'll have to decide, we can only put up one thing at a time. So Ms. Griffith, do you think it's better, are you just?
The question.
Is your question about her testimony or about the IS MND? Because we can put up her testimony on the screen instead, that might be easier.
Okay, well, the the question is related to part of her testimony where she's referencing the SEQA.
Okay, to stop there, Ms. Mullin, thank you for putting up that exhibit, but now please take it down and put up exhibit GSD twelve. She's quite good, but we do have to tell her which exhibit we want her to put up.
Right.
So hang on, we'll get there. Okay, and that's, so this is exhibit GSD twelve, and then let's go to page ten of that, I think that's where you started, Ms. Griffith.
Pages ten to eleven of sixteen.
Okay, so we'll we'll scroll down. Yeah, I think if you can all still read it, we might maybe make it one notch bigger, Ms. Mullin, if you can. All right, there we go. All right, so then if you can, I think she can only put up one page at a time. So let's scroll down, we'll start, now, does your question concern the bottom, this is page ten? You want to ask about that, or do you want to go on to the top of page eleven?
I'm having a hard time reading off of the computer.
Okay, we'll make it one notch bigger. And then scroll down to the bottom. Is that, is that a little bit more, there we go, that's better, is that more legible now? I have old eyes too, so maybe you're not old, but I know I have old eyes, so maybe if you read it, that helps. Now, what is your question, and if necessary, we can move to page eleven.
Okay, so the question is regarding the LAFCO two thousand thirteen IS MND. And which is also referencing the SEQA documents. And my question is, the finding contained in this statement is predicated upon permitted and committed water resources at the time the addendum was prepared. Can you please tell us how many other water resource permit commitments have been made by GSD since then? And can you please tell us approximately how many additional acre feet and or gallons per year the total those additional permitted water resource commitments comprise?
So Ms. Griffith, just so I'm clear, since then, do you mean since
Since the...
Twenty thirteen?
Yes.
Okay, because it's, it wasn't clearly meant since twenty thirteen when the IS MND was issued, or since twenty nineteen when the addendum was issued, so is your question, how many additional connections and volume since twenty thirteen?
Yes.
All right, so hopefully, Ms. Short, that question is clear to you, and if if it is, please answer.
The question is clear, I could probably answer it if I went through all the water source capacity reports that had been completed since two thousand eighteen to be able to answer it since two thousand nineteen. But I don't have at my fingertips the answer to questions from eight years ago as to exactly what connections to our district have been made since two thousand thirteen.
Okay, and would it help, I'm going to help you out, Ms. Griffith, here a little bit, so Ms. Short, can you answer the question for number of connections and volumes since twenty nineteen when the addendum was issued?
If you would like to give me time to go through each of the reports and write them down and add them up, I could do that, but that's not not a figure that's readily available.
Okay.
That's multiple years.
Right.
All right, so go ahead, Ms. Griffith.
Additionally, GSD has several known and reasonably foreseeable additional water resource service connection commitments. It will need to make an issue in the near future, including but not limited to the site of the new hospital facility.
So again, Ms. Griffith, please turn this into a question.
I'm getting there. Is there a way you can say with certainty that additional water resource permit commitments have been made by GSD since the addendum IS MND in two thousand sixteen? And reasonably foresee the water resource commitment for these future commitments?
That I can answer, because every year when I prepare the surf, the source capacity report, I include a table that has every single one of the properties that we have that commitment to. And we started with the list that I prepared, and we included in the two thousand thirteen IS MND. And so we do have a tally of every property that we have any responsibility for. And then we compare that with what we have as our available source capacity and show that we have millions and millions of gallons of excess even beyond those future commitments that we have.
Okay, I think that's all I have questions for this time.
Okay, thank you. Just let me bear with me, I'm writing a few notes down here. Okay, so that concludes Redway CSD's cross-examination, now you can, Ms. Mullin, you can take down exhibit GSD twelve, and incidentally, it has the heading SEQA twelve at the top, but we know it's actually GSD thirteen. I think it says SEQA thirteen, but it's GSD thirteen. So with that, Mr. Voice, you may now ask cross-examination questions. And again, just a reminder, this is the time for questions, you'll you'll get your chance to testify later. Do you have questions for Ms. Short?
I do, it's quite a bit, but I'll try to keep it very, very short.
Okay, please do, I will encourage you to to move on with questions as necessary.
In your testimony, the written testimony, on page two.
Okay, and again, we'll put up, sorry, Ms. Mullin, we just took it down, please put up GSD thirteen, page two. And just bear with us for a minute, Mr. Voice, we'll have it up on the screen. I jumped the gun to ask her to take it down, that was a mistake. Okay. So that, which part of the page, we can zoom in on a certain part of the page if you want us to, Mr. Voice.
That's right, it's in the first paragraph. It talks, basically, it starts, the meter had been turned turned off in two thousand nine. And so I wanted to know, just just to be on the same page, is, when that was turned off in two thousand nine, and you refer to throughout the whole document you submitted in your testimony, a historical connection. And you talked about how you were obligated to give the park water. And I just wanted to confirm if 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 this was, if the park water was turned off in two thousand nine, and you, GSD reimbursed the park over two, a little over two thousand dollars in two thousand thirteen, how are they still historical, and why are you obligated to provide them with water?
They're historical because they historically have had water service, and the only reason it was disconnected was because that the service line that went from the back of their meter had gotten to a point of disrepair on the very steep slopes that go up to it, that it was leaking significantly, and we were not willing to allow that level of water loss on a line. And so the agreement that the district came to was that we would go ahead and shut that off, but they would continue to pay the base rate with the idea we were going to reconnect them. When we got to the point in the annexation process where we decided that we were not willing to reconnect them until after they finished their EIR, that's when the board decided that they felt like it was in the the best option was to go ahead and reimburse them for those base rates that they had paid when they didn't actually have any water service, and that this issue would be reconsidered once their EIR was done. And that's why there's so many years between the two thousand thirteen initial study that lists out the conditions that we're willing to serve this parcel with and the actual requests from the park to reinstate that service is because they had to finish their EIR.
So when they were reimbursed for everything that it paid without having water, what was the, so they they were no longer a customer at that point? Is that correct?
Yeah.
And since they knew all this in communications, GSD meetings, correspondence back and forth to the park board about what the proposed use would be once they finished their EIR, was there, do you know why the park board never included any of this information in their EIR?
I cannot testify to that as a statement of fact, I have my own personal opinion, but that's all it is.
Well, can you give your personal opinion?
You you can, you can give your understanding, Ms. Short, if you haven't. And, Mr. Voice, there will be park witnesses that you can ask this question of as well.
Well, I wanted to go down the line, I wanted to go down the line for each individual, because this was generated by GSD.
Yeah, no, I know, and that's why I said Ms. Short can testify what her understanding is.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just my perception. It was a very heated discussion between the district and the park board at that time. And I felt like at the end of it, there were some hard feelings, and that those caused the park board to make some choices and how they processed their EIR, even though the district encouraged them all along to include us as one of their water sources so that it was clearly laid out in the EIR, and they didn't. I just, I just think it's it's the the feelings that that process was left with that caused that. But like I said, I don't know that for sure, that's just my perception from the conversations that I had with the then park board members. None of those people are on the park board anymore.
Correct, or or on the GSD board.
With a few exceptions.
Yeah. Thank you. The, now, would this have anything to do? With besides in in two thousand thirteen, when the majority of this took place, actually, two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen? There was a letter sent by, I don't know if he was representing the park board or just as a member of what he calls the director emeritus, was Peter Rice. And the issue at that point was that for GSD to build the new surface water treatment plant. They couldn't use the two-phase PG and E power, they had to use three-phase. And that needed an easement between the park and GSD. And in this letter.
Excuse me, Mr. Voice, excuse me, Mr. Voice, there's got to be a question here.
There is, I'm getting there.
Well, get there right away, please.
Okay. What's your understanding of what they were asking for? Because they appear to be asking for metered a metered water connection. To just sign over the easement to GSD. Kind of a quip pro quo, as it would be. That if they gave GSD the easement, GSD would give them a water connection. This was in May sixth of two thousand thirteen. Is that your understanding about it?
No, my understanding is that the park board gave GSD an easement with no conditions, and there was no promise of anything in the future in regards to water service. And there's no documents that regardless of what the park was hoping for, that isn't what happened.
Right, but I'm looking at a document from May twenty ninth, two thousand thirteen from GSD. At that time, Board Chair Dennis Barasa.
Is this one of your exhibits?
Yeah, Mr. Voice, if if you if you want to ask her a question about this document, we want to put it up on the screen. Does this have an exhibit number?
No, 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 it, this was stuff that I gathered after June second, when I saw her testimony.
All right.
I haven't had time, nor have I posted it, I don't think. I might have done it really, really late after you guys labeled everything. It might still be sitting there in the in the upload file.
All right, well, well, just a minute, let me see if we can check. Do you know if you uploaded it?
I did, but it was just recently because it was all the information I've gathered and put together after. Because we didn't, we didn't know what the testimony was going to be till after June second.
No, you are allowed to ask her questions about other. Except you're you're allowed to put other exhibits forward and ask questions about it, but I, oh, here we are. I see a a letter here that is. It's dated, it's from Garberville Sanitary District, dated May twenty nine, two thousand thirteen. It looks like you just uploaded that. So if you can bear with us, we we will give that the next EV exhibit number in order. And I will ask, Mr. Anderson, give us just a moment.
No problem. I think I gave it the last, the then after my last exhibit that was on file, I think I gave it EV thirty.
Okay, we're going to try to give it an exhibit number and most importantly, I'll try to put it up on the screen here, because in fairness to Ms. Short, if if you're going to ask her a question about a letter from eight years ago, we hope that she can see it.
I totally understand.
In fairness to Ms. Short, I should have a chance to read it and actually evaluate it before I'm required to testify on it.
Okay, well, we're going to put it up there and then we will, I will ask you if you recognize it. And if necessary, we can take a short break and you can read it. That's, that's fine, you know, we want to make sure we get good testimony here.
Yeah, regardless of what some email from the park says. I know what was executed for the easement agreement, and there were no conditions of any kind that the park received anything.
Okay, so Ms. Short, wait, wait, stop. We we don't have a question right now. We need to get the letter on the screen. And then Mr. Voice can ask you a short question about the letter. You can either answer if you can, or if you want to take a minute to read the letter. We will, we will take a break, so you can do that, and then you can answer the question. So just just bear with us, we're we're good here. My staff is very good, but they do have to move the file over. And then post it, which I think they're doing right now. So give us just a minute, everybody just hold on, and we'll get there.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
The document's been moved over to the FTP site and is labeled EV thirty-three.
Okay, so we have EV thirty-three, and Ms. Mullen, if you can, thank you, Mr. Anderson, this Ms. Mullen, if you can post it, there, we now have it. I I will say that's pretty darn good for my staff to get move that fast. So how many, this appears to be a six-page long letter. I'm not sure whether they're exhibits, maybe Ms. Mullen, if you'd make it a little smaller, let's just see if we can get a little lay of the land here for how long it is. Okay, and there's some highlights, so just scroll down. First of all, let's see who signed it. It's got a lot of highlighting, it's it's three pages long, signed by Dennis Barasa. And then why don't you just scroll down so we can see what there, then there's, it looks like some some map pages and so forth. Okay, so go back up to the top. And let me just see here whether it is now appeared in the exhibits that are posted to the FTP site. It's now there. Okay, so Ms. Short, do you have access to the AHO FTP page that we've uploaded all the exhibits to?
I'm looking at it, but like you say, it's long, so and I'm trying to get it big enough that I can actually read it.
Okay, well, you, so you can download from, you can access it. So first of all, Mr. Voice, why don't you tell us what your question is, and then I'm going to give, it's it's about time for a mid-morning break anyway, so I'll give Ms. Short a chance to read the letter and then answer your question. But please tell us what your question is that you want to ask her. So I mean, you've highlighted a lot of it, but you have specific passages you want to ask her about.
Well, the number one, that this that this does exist, it doesn't matter if anybody fell through with this. It's the fact that it was written and it was given to GSD and on page three of the GSD letter, it states. Second to the last paragraph. That they've, GSD felt that the park board was holding this easement hostage.
And that they. Okay, so 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 wait, so stop there. You can read from the letter in your closing argument, in your closing brief. It sounds like your only question from Ms. Short, though, is did GSD in fact send this letter to the Park Board of Directors? On May twenty ninth of two thousand thirteen, is that in fact your question? Do you want her to basically authenticate the letter?
Correct.
And then beyond that, I I don't know that it's really appropriate to ask her. I mean, she can say, yes, the letter says this, but you can make any arguments you want about the letter, but is that that, is that really your only question from Ms. Short, is is this in fact a letter that GSD sent to the park district?
That is, and and why wasn't it included in the packet for anything else? That describes what, how many times or what different ways the park was trying to get a water connection from GSD?
Okay, so let's split that up into two questions. First of all, Ms. Short, can you confirm that GSD sent this letter? On on or about May twenty nine of two thousand thirteen to the Park Board of Directors, or I mean, if if you can. Fine, if you need to check the the district's files, let us know. But first of all, can you just confirm that the district sent this letter?
I can, and I wrote this letter.
Okay, that's that's it. So and it was signed. Now, Mr. Voice's next question is, why? As I understand it, Mr. Voice, your question is, why did the district not include this in some set of materials? But what set of materials are you talking about?
The application to the Water Board, or I should, the change petition, application, any of her comments that she's made, testimony.
Okay, so the question is, okay, so your question is, why did the district not include this in their filings with the State Water Board for this proceeding? Is that your question?
That is correct.
Okay, so Ms. Short, I think you can answer that question.
I guess my answer, there are hundreds and thousands of pages of letters and emails that could have been attached to our petition, and we attached what we thought was relevant.
Okay, so Mr. Voice, you may move on. We certainly will. When we get to admitting exhibits, we will admit this letter into the record, into evidence, so that you can make arguments about it. But I don't think there are further questions from Ms. Short about this letter.
No, that's that's, I just wanted to put put that in the record.
Okay, and you have, so please move on.
Feel that they are obligated to give this water water connection to the park?
Okay, and I'm sorry, you broke up on that one, so please just look carefully at your microphone or repeat your question, because I could not hear it.
Yeah, my internet just dropped for a second, sorry.
Look at the microphone when you talk, it'll you'll get your voice activated, so you'll hear, it'll go through better.
Why does GSD feel it's obligated to give the community park a water connection?
I don't feel like I can speak on behalf of our Board of Directors from my very first coordination of this project with them, that has been their position, is that there was a water service and that it was only temporary disconnected and that they always intended to reinstate it. And so I can't speak as to the why they feel that way.
Has the GSD Board re reviewed? And approved your testimony for today by a a board vote in a public meeting?
No.
So they have no idea what you're saying?
I I can't speak to what they know or don't know. It has not been presented in a public board meeting, no.
And they haven't, they haven't approved your testimony for today?
No.
So who are you speaking for today in this testimony? The GSD Board or the Park Board?
I never speak for the Park Board. I only speak for GSD as the applicant.
Okay, fair enough. Apparently, there's a, there's a payment schedule or a payment arrangement. From GSD to the park. And I wonder if you could go through that payment arrangement that the park has made with GSD.
And excuse me, Ms. Mullen, you can go ahead and take down this exhibit. I think we're done with that, so we can go back to full screen. And with that, Ms. Short, please answer the question if you can, if you have knowledge.
I would like to ask a question of you, Mr. Lilly, before we go down these paths. I, these things don't have anything to do with the requests before the Water Board as to whether or not the park should be added to our place of use. I mean, I thought we were going to constrain this this testimony and this conversation to things that were directly applicable to the questions that were posed for this hearing.
Okay, well, this, if if there was an attorney here, this is where your attorney would probably object on the grounds of whether this is relevant or not. And I understand you're having to do this without an attorney. So, Mr. Voice, what is the relevance of this question to the issues there before that the Water Board and me during this proceeding?
Because for this proceeding. The GSD had arrangement with the Park Board to pay for all of Jenny Short's time, all of GSD time for this petition. And so I wanted to have her explain to it at this hearing, how that arrangement works, because it's directly involved with this whole proceeding.
Okay, so I, Ms. Short, I think that is relevant. Again, I'm not suggesting anything otherwise, but I I think it is relevant to the credibility of your testimony, and I don't want to say, I don't want to suggest anything that here, so please don't take me wrong, but it it is fair for all of us to know whether this, you know, had some effect on your testimony, if in fact the park district or the park was paying this the sanitary district for the time for this. So I think you can answer that question.
I can, and it's clearly spelled out in the water service agreement that has been submitted to you as an exhibit. The district entered into an agreement with the Park Board that they would basically front the expenses that were associated with processing both the application through LAFCO and the application through the State Water Board. With the understanding that the Park Board would be offered a three-year zero percent loan on the amount that it costs and that they would make quarterly payments. I work directly for the district, and so all of my time and all of my effort is always billed directly to the district. The district then takes that and decides what portion of it gets billed to the park. And those bills are submitted to the park, and then they pay the district back.
All right, Mr. Voice, I think that answers that question. You may move on.
And who is it that decides? Who gets billed? If, who who is the one that makes the decision with your billing? How much the Park Board pays through this process?
For my billing, anything that's billed to the district that's related to the park and is put on the invoice as a park expense gets passed through to the park to reimburse.
So you're you're the one that's making that decision for GSD?
I guess it depends on how you look at it. I bill my hours to GSD directly related to every project that I work on. And so when I fill out my time card every day, there is a decision that gets made as to how those hours are posted to which project.
Right, so that would mean that you're making that decision for GSD, who gets billed and who does not?
Not not entirely on my own.
Who else makes that decision, how much time you spend on the park?
Ralph does.
Ralph is with you and knows how much time you're spending on the park board project?
No, Ralph reviews all the invoices and determines whether or not they're going to be invoiced to the park.
Just so we're clear on the record, Ralph is Mr. Emerson, the district's.
I'm sorry, yes.
Please go ahead, Mr. Voice.
Okay. The other question I have is in the wording and language included in the water service agreement between the park and GSD. And Reso and GSD Resolution nineteen oh two. Why is that language different between the restrictions and limitations on how much water the park can use and what that means for any kind of mitigation or restrictions or turning them off versus leaving them on? Why is that language different between those two documents?
And Ms. Short, if you can answer that question, go ahead. Otherwise, I will ask Ms. Mullen to put up those two documents. They are both GSD exhibits. It looks like GSD eight and GSD ten, so Mr. Voice can refer to the specific differences he's talking about. But if you know, you can answer, we can move on. If not, we will look at the documents.
I I think it's, the answer is fairly general, so I'm going to go ahead and give you what I believe to be the answer. One is a resolution that's very succinct and is put forward very factually. It's in bullet points, and it's not intended to be used as a legally binding enforceable document between two parties. The second one, the water service agreement itself, was prepared by our attorney, and so he took the items that the board had approved in the resolution, and he transferred those into legal language that would go into an agreement that was going to be recorded against the property. And so while some of the wording may be different as far as what order they're in, or whether there are complete sentences now, or whether or not they have the legal nuances to them. The actual numbers and the facts are the same as to how much water the park is allowed to use and where they're allowed to use it.
Okay. But which which one is more binding then? Is the resolution by GSD more binding than the water service agreement or vice versa?
In my opinion, as an engineer, I mean, that's all you can get here from me.
Let me clarify that. That question does call for a legal conclusion. Ms. Short is not a lawyer. However, she is an engineer who's worked in this field for a long time, who has some expertise on these issues. So, Ms. Short, you may answer that question to the extent of your knowledge, but with the caveat that you're not a lawyer who is qualified to give legal opinions, just to the best of your knowledge.
Yeah, yeah. Based on my experience, I believe that the conditions that are in the water service agreement are going to be more binding long-term, because they're going to be recorded against the property, and that's going to be the document that's most readily available to people should there be a problem. A resolution that could be decades old in GSD's files is going to be much harder to find and enforce.
Okay, fair enough. Can you define the difference between future development and what you have called long-term development with the park?
I would need a reference for where you're drawing those words from.
See. You use the long-term development in an email to Ralph Emerson on May 31, 2019. It's my exhibit number five.
Okay, let's put up, Ms. Mullen, please put up exhibit EV5 on the screen share. Mr. Voice, tell us, it's, we can make it bigger, but tell us what page you want Ms. Short to look at. Okay, that, to text that's highlighted by Ms. Mullen, maybe you can scroll down to the bottom and make it a little bigger. If it'll work, if it'll, there, there we go. Okay, so what paragraph are you asking her about there?
God, I hope I didn't give you the wrong exhibit. I might have to apologize. I thought that's where it was unless it's on the next page.
Okay, well, we can scroll to the next page.
Sorry. Oh, I'm saying it in the I'm saying, I'm asking her a question to my number two that's highlighted. What is the difference between future development and what Jenny is calling a long-term development at the SHCP?
Okay, so, so just so I'm clear, Mr. Voice, the, on page two here of exhibit EV5, there's a highlighted numbered paragraph two, which uses the term long-term development. I do not see the term future development, but is your question, does she have a distinction between the term long-term development here and future development? Is that your question?
Right, because future development is used in the water service agreement and also in Resolution 1902.
Okay, so if necessary, we can pull up one of those documents, but maybe, Ms. Short, you can answer the question. Do you, do you understand the difference between what you've used the term long-term development here? Actually, this is, this is not, this is not, I'm trying to see who this is an email from. It looks like this may be, anyway, if you can clarify whether you are familiar with the term long-term development, I can't tell who wrote this email. It looks like, Mr. Voice, you wrote this email, is that correct?
I, I wrote her that email in response to the email conversation that I got through a Public Records Act with GSD showing on page one.
Okay, so that, that quote, is that a quote from an email she had written?
Yes.
Okay, so Ms. Short, this is a little tortured, but it looks like that paragraph two, he says, is a quote from an email you wrote. So first of all, do you recognize that quote being from an email you wrote?
I don't know if this is the entirety of the email. What he has done here is taken parts and pieces out of these. So it's hard to tell what context it's in.
Okay.
And this is actually an email to Ralph, not to me, but.
All right, well, it's actually an email from you to Ralph, and that's all I received. In fact, in my email to you, I could, I even asked that, I asked for all the communication, and all I got was that one bit from you to Ralph. And I never got replied to this email either.
All right, so it does, and again, I'm a little confused, but it looks like the text here, I'm looking back, if you can, Ms. Mullen, scroll, scroll up to page one. It looks like this is a quote, starting, it looks like it says, "May 31, 2019", and it's to Ralph, and this is, this is good news. And then if you scroll down, Ms. Mullen, to page two, it does say it's from Jenny, and then I'm not sure what this, who wrote the text below that. But can you just tell me if you can make sense of whether, you know, what you said during all of this?
I can try to explain the distinction that, that Ralph and I see between what long-term development is and the fact that future development is a, is a, when you say a future, it's relative to a period of time. And so what's future today is different than what's future five years ago. For us, long-term development are these really big, broad projects that the park wants to someday do that may or may not actually ever happen, things like building big ball fields and putting a concession stand down there and building a convention center. And, you know, those are long-term development things, you know, at some point, they want to put a small campground in the back of the park. And so when Ralph and I talk, when Mr. Emerson and I talk about long-term development, those are more the, the projects that would fall into those categories. You know, some of their other small things that they want to do now so that they can have people come out and have a wedding there or have a dance, or, you know, those are more current, short-term projects. And the, the park's development, of course, is going to have to be phased. And so part of what Ralph and I are talking about here is, is that this is the very beginning of the process before we've even met with LAFCO, and we're trying to get a handle on what is the park even asking for in the water service that they want? Are they just asking for the residences? Are they asking for, you know, unlimited, long-term to everything they might ever want to build? And so this is just an internal discussion between two staff members of an agency trying to determine what is the park actually asking for? Because Ralph had attended a meeting and I had not, and so he's, I'm trying to respond and ask questions about what, what did they say?
Okay, Mr. Voice, I think she's answered that question to the best of her.
Yeah, yeah. I'm very sorry, it was, it was, it wasn't confusing in my mind, so I apologize.
No, I, I think, I think the question is clear, and I think her answer is, it's certainly clear to me, to the best of her knowledge, of explaining that distinction. So I think you can move on now.
Okay, so to try to piece that together is that in the water service agreement and in Resolution 1902, it does make the comment that none of the water services intended to be used for future development on the property by SHCP or shown in the final EIR or adopted by Humboldt County. So it is, with what you were talking about in that brief little paragraph to Ralph, is, is that what you were discussing is what is or what is not? Because all this language came from 2013, and now we're in 2019. So.
I don't know what you mean about all this language, because the water service agreement itself was prepared in 2019. We, Russ and I, Mr. Gans and I started with old versions of letters and things that I had written to the park, and all of that got combined up into a single agreement for the park to review.
Right, but the addendum comes from the 2013 document, the annexation document, correct?
It does not. It's a, the addendum is a 2019 document that was prepared based on 2019 standards.
You mean 2013?
No, I don't. I mean 2019.
But in, in the, in the addendum, it, it talks about that all the conditions of approval came from the 2013 addendum, with the exception of adding the, the water fountains to the mix.
Excuse me, Mr. Voice, let's make sure we have accurate terms. It was a 2013 initial study and mitigated negative declaration, and then it's a 2019 addendum to that document.
Correct.
So, so what is your question with a proper understanding of the names of those two documents?
Didn't all the information for the 2019 addendum ISMND come from the 2013 annexation ISMND?
My answer to that question is no, but that question should be posed to Colette when she testifies. She, her agency prepared the addendum and would better be able to explain to you the distinction of the fact that they updated the 2013 ISMND in 2019 when they did the addendum by adding a bunch of sections that didn't even exist in 2013 under sequel law.
So GSD is not claiming that 2019 addendum that you're, that that was all agreed upon with Humboldt LAFCO?
Excuse me, Mr. Voice, she did not say that at all. I, I think you better restate that question. I, I mean, she doesn't have an attorney to object here, but that, that is not what she just testified to at all.
Well, she, she has testified that I have to app LAFCO because it was them who wrote it.
Yes, so she's saying, since it's a LAFCO, the 2019 addendum is a LAFCO document, you should ask the LAFCO staff person questions about the details of that document. And that, to me, seems like a perfectly reasonable response.
That's fine, that's fine. Well, unless, unless Ms. Short wants to have her attorney present while I continuing the cross-examination on this, I, I guess I'm, I'm done.
Okay, well, she did, she said earlier she did not want to have her attorney present, so we will move on. Thank you, Mr. Voice, for your question. So, Ms. Mullen, you may take down exhibit EV5. And thank you, go back to full screen. So, Ms. Vogel, you're up next. Do you have any cross-examination questions? And you have to go off mute.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Lilly. I recall a document that was produced by GSD and Ms. Short that affirmed that there was absolutely no historical connection for water service. And it was signed by the board chairperson, Dennis Barasa. I know it's been submitted for today, but it confuses me continually to hear a park testimony that they are being reconnected or that they've had a historical connection.
Okay, you've got, you've got, excuse me, wait, wait, stop. You've got to turn this into a question. You'll get to testify later, but do you have a question for Ms. Short?
Yes. Ms. Short, why does that document not settle that question?
And, and I'm going to help here. What document are you talking about? We, we, we can put it up on the screen if you can tell us what document you're talking about.
May I ask Mr. Voice to provide it?
Well, just tell us, no, you may not. What, what, what is the document you are looking for?
It's a specific study that GSD authored explaining to the park board why they do not have an historical connection for water service from GSD.
All right, so let me help out here. Ms. Short, do you know what study Ms. Vogel is talking about?
I don't. I would need her to point me to a document to be able to know what she's referring to.
Okay, so, so Ms. Vogel, do you have a date or anything that can help us find the document?
The date is in 2013, came out just before the park board exited its search for in, in inclusion into the annexation.
Okay, do you, and you, you, do you know whether this is a report or a letter, or you have any idea what kind of document it is?
Yes, it is a report letter. That's perfectly stated.
Can I help you here?
Why don't you, you, you may just tell us if you have an exhibit number. That's all you may say at this point, Mr. Voice, because your questions are, are done.
The last exhibit, the, the last exhibit you just uploaded today while we were speaking.
Okay, so let's go ahead and put up exhibit EV, Ms. Mullen, please put up exhibit EV33 on the screen. Thank you, Mr. Voice. And we'll see if this is what Ms. Vogel is talking about. And I'm going to try to get it on my screen here as well, if it'll let me. Okay, so now, Ms. Vogel, we have this 2013 letter here. Do you know what this letter you want to ask a question about? Yeah, somehow you got back on mute.
May I see the end of the next page?
Okay, let's scroll down to page two.
Um, maybe we scroll to page three.
Okay.
Shall I read it?
Okay, well, just first of all, just tell us what, what are you, are you, what paragraph are you, do you want to ask a question about?
I'm, I thought this was a document which ended with Mr. Barasa saying he's sorry that the issue shows that there is no historical connection. So maybe this is, maybe this is not it.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, not seeing text like that anywhere in this letter, but I, I, again, I'm just seeing it for the first time as well.
Well, this letter clearly states that the district generally supports us.
Okay, yeah, Ms. Short. Ms. Short, wait, 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 hang on, wait. Wait until there's a question. I'm trying to maintain a little control over this hearing if I can. So so, Ms. Vogel? Do you see where, where you're?
Yeah, um, just a moment, please. I'm trying to see if I have that document right here. Well, I apologize. I do not seem to have it. So I, that was my only question. Well, I apologize. I do not seem to have it. Um, so I, that was my only question.
Okay. All right. So let's, let's move on then. Uh, Ms. Mullen, please, thank you. Take down that exhibit. You did it. So our last party for, um, cross-examination questions is Ms. Sutton. If you can, Mr. Cox may move the camera over so we can see Ms. Sutton. And we'll just see, Sutton, do you have any cross-examination questions for Ms. Short?
Okay.
Hello, Ms. Lilly and others. I do have a question from Ms. Short, and it is from the minutes of the GSD meeting on April 27th, and it is page 55 that talks about projects.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. Do you have an exhibit number so we can put this exhibit, this page up on the screen?
I don't have an exhibit number because I thought it was already had that it had already been included.
Okay. Well, well, tell me what the name of the document is. Maybe we can find it.
It is the minutes of the GSD meeting for April 27th.
Okay, I'm going to just ask, Ms. Short, do you know if this is an exhibit that is in, in the GSD exhibits?
Uh, no, it's not.
Okay. Now I'm going to just ask Mr. Voice again, just one question. Is this an exhibit you have submitted that you know of? And you have to go off mute to tell us.
Sorry. Um, no.
Okay. So I'm, I'm stuck. Um, Ms. Sutton, I don't know where these minutes are. And unless we can find, I mean, you can ask a question and see if, if Ms. Short knows, but it's going to be hard for her to answer a question without seeing the document.
Well, and a year would help if you could tell me what year you're talking about.
Oh, the most recent.
Okay.
27, 2021.
Okay, give me a second. I'll see if I can find them. I may or may not have them.
Uh, thank you, Jenny.
Okay, so, oh, you said page 55. Okay, those would be, okay, wait, you said April 27th, 2021?
Yes. And on page 55, where you are.
Hang on, hang on a second. Let me see if I can find them here. Okay. I don't know about page 55 because this is page seven in the agenda packet, but I see the minutes of the meeting.
Okay. So Ms. Sutton, just tell us what your, if you can just read one or two sentences from the minutes that you want to ask a question about, that might help. We can label this as an exhibit if we need to.
Yes, I'm referring to the chart on page 55. Under the heading, it's table three, and it says projects under consideration.
Okay, hang on. Don't, I don't think you're in the minutes. Let me, I think you're in the agenda packet.
Let's see if we can, it just helps everyone if we can get on the same page here. And we'll, we'll take a minute if we need to.
Well, we can all stand up and breathe.
So, um, I show page 55 in the April 21st, 2020, or April 27th, 2021 board packet as, there's a table two on there. Is that the one you're talking about?
No, table three.
Okay, table three is at the bottom and continues on to the next page. Okay.
Where you're showing, um, and this is titled projects under consideration and where it shows the Southern Humboldt Community Park. It says 180,000 gallons. So my question is, since I understood in the agreement that when we talk about 2,000 cubic feet a month and then talk about the conditions and you look at it that there's not a problem until they go over 3,000 cubic feet a month. That really allows the park to use an additional eight, I mean, if you look at it and plan to compensate for that, you could use 850 cubic feet more per month and still not be, um, not create any problems. It's kind of like gaming the system, I would say.
Okay, so Ms. Sutton, turn this into a question, please.
So, well, my question is, is that still in the agreement? That this is, if this is a complete 2,000, this is the limit, 2,000 cubic feet, or if it is with this conditional kind of well, we're not going to do anything unless it goes over 3,000 two times in a year. That's a lot of leeway.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. So let's turn this into a question. I think your question is, does the agreement limit the deliveries from the, the district to the park to 2,000 cubic feet per month? Or can they go up to 3,000 cubic feet in some months? Is that your question?
Almost. That they could go up an additional 850 cubic feet a month. They could almost.
And again, I, Ms. Ms. Sutton, I, I just need to, wait, 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 wait. I'm talking now. Please listen. You have to explain to me how you get 850 because if I go from 2,000 to 3,000, I get 1,000. I don't get 850. So where does 850 come from?
It is an arbitrary number. You could pick.
No, no. Where did you get 850 to, for your question?
I'm, I'm looking at the condition that nothing happens unless the park goes over 3,000 cubic feet. I mean, we're talking about, if I understand correctly, we're talking about a limit of 2,000 cubic feet per month. But so my question is, is that really cut off at 2,000 cubic feet? Or does this kind of alteration in the wording bump it up to something that is over 2,000 cubic feet a month? Is that still clear?
That, that's, that's a good, clear question. So Ms. Short, you may answer that question.
So the way that the district has this set up in the agreement is that there's a 2,000 cubic foot limit on the account and that anytime the park goes over, they'll be notified. If they go over 3,000, any two months in a 12-month period, their service will be shut off and subject to a reconnection situation. Um, the reason that the attorney wrote this that way is because he said that we needed to have some methodology in there to deal with the fact that property owners do not go out and read their meter every day to see where they're at compared to 20 units, if they even know how to read their meter. And so he, his advice was to set up the agreement such that there was some leeway in there. It's one of the comments that I provided back to the water board is that if the water board insists on putting a condition in our water permit, it needs to be consistent with the water service agreement as well because there needs to be some grace section in there. And we chose 1,000 cubic feet per month. If you continue down to the table five that's in the same document that Ms. Sutton is referring to, it shows that we, even after accounting for all of the potential water services that we are obligated to make on properties that are not currently developed and, and in all likelihood may never develop, we still have over three and a half million gallons a year available. Even if they went over every single month, just right up to the nat's ass of the 3,000 cubic feet per month, we still would have way more than sufficient water source capacity to be able to supply that. And so this, this picking of 2,000 cubic feet and then wanting to hold that hard and fast every single month as opposed to either doing an average or having some sort of a, a grace section on each month is the intent of what's in the water service agreement.
Okay. So Ms. Sutton, I think that answers your question. Do you have any other questions for Ms. Short at this time?
Well, I would have one other question just to ask how much of a leeway, how much of a buffer do you consider since often there have been very many variables that come into play in water usage?
Okay. So I, I think she has answered that question already, saying the leeway is to go from 2,000 up to 3,000. But Ms. Short, do you have anything else you want to say in response to Ms. Sutton's question about the, how much leeway does the district allow?
Um, the, the only thing that I would say is if, let's, let's say we have a catastrophic event and the park catches on fire. I'm going to encourage the park to use however much water it takes to put the fire out regardless of whether they go over the 3,000 cubic feet. There are accident circumstances that occur sometimes that would, would cause a situation that would be, that would warrant going over it. But that is not going to be the operational method or, or mode that the park is going to be allowed to, um, act in. And the county knows that, and so does the park. So in, in my opinion, the district has done a good job in trying to document our desire to limit this water service to 2,000 cubic feet a month.
Okay. So Ms. Sutton, I think that answers that question. Do you have any further questions?
Uh, not at this time.
All right. So I do, and let me just say, I see Ms. That's Sanchez has appeared and raised her hand. Um, and we asked you to appear at 11 and you're at 11. Can you hang on with us for about 15 minutes till we can wrap up Ms. Short's testimony and then we can go to you?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you. I'd, I'd like to finish up Ms. Short's so we can, we can do that. So Ms. Short, that, that is all the questions, uh, from the parties. Um, I do have a couple of questions I would like to ask you. Um, first of all, um, it's not entirely clear from your testimony. I think it's pretty clear and you may have said, but are you in fact an employee of the sanitary district?
So I've been an employee of the sanitary district for many, many years. And when I hired Ralph to be the general manager, um, I switched to a very part-time schedule where I work about 10 hours a week. And so at that time, we decided to set up up as more like a contract employee basis. So I build the district on a monthly basis and do not run my time through their payroll system, but GSD is the only agency that I work for.
Okay. So what, what were the years when you were a full-time employee with the district?
Hmm, let's see. 2009 to, I'm going to say about the end of 2014. I'd have to look to give you an exact date.
Okay. Well, that's close enough. And what was your title or when you, during that time?
I was the capital projects manager.
Okay. And so since 2014, have you been on the arrangement where you're part-time contract employee?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have a title or are you just sort of as, as requested by the, uh, district?
Well, the title that, that I've been given and that I use like on all the board members that I write to the board is consultant project manager.
Okay. And then just tell us what your, uh, duties are in that, in that position. I realize there may be some variation, but please just tell us your general, a general description of your duties.
Okay. So the main thing that I do is I oversee all our capital improvement projects. I do all of the applications for grant funds and loan funds. I do, um, all of the RFPs. I oversee all the engineers that do design. I oversee the construction. I oversee the finances of all of our large construction projects. Um, I also function probably as, you know, most of the parts of like a chief financial officer. I do all their budgeting and I oversee their accounting on a practical day-to-day basis. And then I coordinate with CPA who does our monthly oversight. Um, and then I, I do projects like this that come along where we have something that needs to be taken care of that's, uh, you know, beyond the scope of what a small district that only has four employees is capable of, capable of taking on in addition to their normal operational duties of having to try to provide water and sewer service. So those are kind of the, the specialty areas that I fulfill for the district.
All right. And then, uh, just regarding your qualifications, I, you said you were an engineer. Are you a registered engineer in California?
I'm a registered engineer in Oregon. I worked for the Oregon Department of Transportation for a long time, and so I was registered up there. Um.
And is that as a civil engineer?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. But you're not registered in California as an engineer?
No, so far I've not needed it.
Okay. And then what is your, uh, your education? What did you, what's your, where did you get your degree and what in?
Okay, I have a bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering from Chico State.
All right. I just thought it was important to have that on the record. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so let me just go on here. Ms. Mullen, if you can put up exhibit GSD 12. And go to page two. And then zoom in just in the middle of the page, please. Okay, that's good. So there's, right about the middle of the page, Ms. Short, the, the text says, GSD has constrained not only to the location of service, but also to the monthly quantity of water we are willing to allocate to this property. And this property is the, um, South Humboldt Community Park property. So if you can just tell me, what is the constraint that GSD has imposed on its monthly service to this property?
So I believe the answer to this question is the same as the answer I just gave to Mrs. Sutton is that the district, anything, anytime the park goes over 2,000 cubic feet, the district will be contacting them and finding out why and what happened. And our goal is for them to stay under 2,000 cubic feet every single month. If they go over it, we'll have to work with them on what's going on. If they go over 3,000 cubic feet, it's our intent to turn off their meter and then address whether or not there's a reason for it. We also have these same conditions set up with LAFCO. And so if they go over the 3,000 cubic feet, we will coordinate with LAFCO as well as to what's happening out there that's causing them to be over that amount and try to work with them and coming up with ways that they can minimize the water that they're using that's potable as opposed to just continuing to use the non-potable water for things that are outdoors.
Okay, thank you. And then, Ms. Mullen, if you can please move to page five of this exhibit GSD 12. Okay, right there, right near the top. Okay. So that's good. So paragraph one says, this petition does not change any of the diversion terms. The annual limit of 80 million gallons, the instantaneous limit of 0.75 CFS or 10% of the river flow, whichever is less, remain unchanged. Do you see that?
I do.
Testimony? Excuse me, I didn't hear, Ms. Short. Do you see that line in your testimony?
I do.
Okay. So my question is, the, uh, 10% of river flow as a minimum, I don't think is in the current water right permit or license. So what, where does that come from?
So that is a condition of our lake and stream bed alteration agreement that we have with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And so when I list them out there, I always think of them as kind of all together because those are all the limitations that we implement.
Okay. So do you, would the district have any objection if the water board added that limitation as a term in the water right permit and license?
We would not, although as I testified in my summary, we would prefer to see number six not changed to 80 million gallons until we convert our permit to a license.
Okay. I'm sorry, where is that? Is that in your testimony here?
It's on the screen right now, number six. That's a change that you've made from our existing one to what you're proposing.
Okay, okay. And that's certainly something that you should address in your, uh, closing brief. So let me go forward then. I just had one more question. Um, yes, Ms. Mullen, if you can please turn to page 12 of the same exhibit GSD 12. And then just scroll down to the middle of the page. And make it, yeah, if you can make that bigger. The middle of the paragraph there, that's one more, one more notch bigger. Thank you. Okay. So Ms. Short, and this is quoting from, this italicized text is quoting from the 2019 addendum. Okay, so Ms. Short, and this is quoting from, this italicized text is quoting from the 2019 addendum. And the, the first two sentences there on this paragraph say, "The 2016 EIR did not include connection to GSD for water service. Existing and onsite water sources were proposed for use at the park. However, based on water demand analysis referred, referenced in the 2016 EIR, the estimated potable water demand for SHCP can be calculated at approximately 6, 7, 9, 2, 8 to 8 gallons per year." Do you see that text?
I, I do.
Okay, and I just have to confess, I went back and looked at the 2016 EIR yesterday and the water supplier report in it. And I, for the life of me, could not find that 6, 7, 9, 8 to 8 gallons. I didn't see the number and I, I couldn't see any easy way to calculate it. And this may be a question for Ms. Metz since it's the LAFCO's addendum. But do you know where that number came from or how it was calculated?
I, I cannot say that I know exactly where LAFCO got that number from, but I would be glad to look in the EIR to see if I can find. I've worked with the EIR quite a bit and there's a number of appendices that go with it that are directly related to water demand. So I suspect it came out of one of those. Would you like me to look or would you like to ask Ms. Metz?
Let's do this. I will ask Ms. Metz that question. And then if, if she doesn't know, then during our break, our lunch break probably, I'll ask you to just go check the EIR if you can. And then maybe you can give me that answer after lunch if that'll work. Will that work all right for you?
Yes, that would be fine.
All right, so let me just double check. I think those are, that, that's, those are all of my questions. So you may take that exhibit down, Ms. Mullin. Thank you. So do you have, I know this is a little tricky when you don't have an attorney, but do you have any redirect questions that have arisen from the cross-examination? Questions or are you content with wrapping up your testimony right now?
Who would I be redirecting the question to?
Yourself. That's why it's a little tricky. I, I don't think there's anything you need to. I just have to give you the opportunity if you think that there is anything.
Yeah, I can't think of anything to ask myself.
All right, no, it's, it's, it's a little tricky. So that will conclude your testimony and we will go on to Ms. Met Sanchez.
Okay.
Sanchi, who, excuse me, I hope I got that right. Who's been waiting patiently and I know has to go get done by noon to get back to your other duties as LAFCO executive officer. So Ms. Met Sanchi, I hope I got this right. The way it works today is I will administer the oath to you. You will have a chance to briefly summarize your written testimony and then will be subject to cross-examination questions. So let's start. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you give in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, and we can put up, Ms. Mullin, please put up exhibit GSD 13 on the screen. Just give her a moment, we'll get that up there. Okay, and we'll just start there. So I think she's, yeah, there we go. We'll leave it small for now. But so Ms. Met Sanchi, is, is this in fact your written testimony for this hearing?
It is.
All right, and you may briefly summarize this if there are any. You don't need to read it, but I've read it all ahead of time and
Okay.
Got it all. But if there are just particular points you would like to summarize, please go ahead.
I, I think I'll just start with, you know, my written testimony that's in front of you pertains to the actions of the Humboldt Local Agency Formation Commission in approving Garberville Sanitary District's application to provide water services outside the district boundaries to the Southern Humboldt Community Park. And the, you know, authority of the LAFCO actions is included in, codified in the California Government Code. That's also included in there. There's a long history, you know, that I tried to document in my written testimony with regard to this application when it was submitted. And, you know, the LAFCO proceedings were initiated by the Garberville Sanitary District for their resolution 1902. And once we received that application, there was a decision to, that, that additional SEQA analysis was required. And so there was a decision to prepare the addendum, which is included as exhibit SEQA 18. And this is an addendum to the 2013 final recirculated initial study MND prepared for the Garberville Sanitary District Annexation Project. So specifically to that prior SEQA document. Moving on, again, just to summarize, the addendum evaluated whether proposed minor modifications to the district's jurisdictional boundary in place of use result in any new or substantially more adverse significant effects not previously identified in the 2013 initial study MND. As verified in the addendum, the proposed water service extension would not cause new significant effects not ident, not previously identified. And so with that, as responsible agency Humboldt LAFCO addressed all the additional review categories of potential impact in our addendum. For instance, wildfire was not previously analyzed as a separate impact section in SEQA, SEQA guidelines. So we review that specifically in our addendum as well as reviewing each section of potential environmental effect, looking at how the 2013, summarizing how the 2013 initial study MND analyzed it as well as how the proposed service extension would, would modify or how that would affect the, the previous analysis. We were not required to circulate the addendum, but we did post and publish a notice of intent to adopt the SEQA addendum. And it was published twice in the Humboldt Independent and two separate publications. We had an, you know, informal public comment period again, because it's not required on the proposed addendum. And Humboldt LAFCO held a public hearing to consider the adequacy of the addendum at September, at its September 18, 2019 meeting. At the hearing, the commission took two separate actions. The first being approving the initial study MND addendum via LAFCO resolution 1904. And the second being approving the Garberville Sanitary District Water Service Extension. That was via resolution 1905, both part of the exhibit list. And the service extension included three conditions, which I'll summarize. The first condition requires that the district in Southern Humboldt Community Park enter into a water service agreement regarding the service extension and record that agreement with the county of Humboldt. The agreement must include a provision that limits the extension of water services to designated areas of the subject property, which is the, consistent with the 18 acres and not to any other properties. Any expansion or intensification would be considered a new request and subject to LAFCO approval. And the, that service agreement would automatically terminate at such time the property is annexed to the district. And that this water service agreement between the district and the park, as approved by LAFCO, is included as exhibit GSD 8. The second condition requires that the property owner, being the Southern Humboldt Community Park, enter an agreement with the district consenting to district annexation if proposed in the future. And this condition also requires appropriate disclosure, which is really important. So disclosure of this consent to annexation by any successors of the property, including any lease or rental agreement that the property owner may enter into or by any person succeeding to the owner interest or fee title to the property. And so the disclosure clarifies that the annexation consent is a complete and irrevocable consent to annexation of the property leased or rented and is binding on all persons possessing or occupying such property. And the condition also specifies that LAFCO shall treat this consent as binding. Therefore, if annexation was proposed and we were, you know, proceeding with, evaluating the annexation proceedings, any objection or protest during annexation proceedings would be considered null and void and be disregarded by LAFCO in determining objections and the value of written protests for annexation. And so this recorded annexation and consent agreement and covenant is included as exhibit GSD 11. And then the third and final condition was that all remaining LAFCO fees must be paid in full prior to the extension of service authorization becoming effective. And subsequent to this approval on September 18, 2019, LAFCO filed a notice of determination with the Humboldt County Clerk and that NOD is included as exhibit SEQA 22. And that's a summary of my written testimony. I'm available.
Thank you. And just, I know this is very basic, but I'm going to just ask anyway, just so we can have the context here on the record. So the Humboldt, the South Humboldt Community Park is not currently within the Garberville Sanitary District's authorized service area. Is that correct?
Correct, it is outside of the district's jurisdictional boundary, but it is within the district's sphere of influence.
And that's why, because it's outside the, the jurisdictional boundary, that's why LAFCO's approval is necessary for the district to be able to provide water service to the park. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I don't have, I, I may have questions later, but that's all I have for now. So first of all, I'll just go down the list here. So Ms. Short, do you have any questions for cross-examination for Ms. Met Sanchi?
I do not.
All right, and next for Southern Humboldt Community Park, either Ms. Griffith or, or any of the other representatives, do you have any cross-examination questions for Ms. Met Sanchi? And whoever you are, you have to go.
I'm Diane Griffiths and I'm with the Redway Community Services District, not the park.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got you mixed up. So we, do we have, who's, who's our representative? You think I'd be able to write this down? So Ms. Cochran, excuse me. Ms. Cochran, do you have any questions for the Southern Humboldt Community Park?
I do not have any questions for Ms. Met Sanchi, thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Griffith. All right, thank you. So Ms. Griffith or Mr. Cox, do you have any, on behalf of Redway, do you have any questions for Ms. Met Sanchi?
I do not.
Okay, and Mr. Cox, assume you don't either.
I, I do not.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Voice, do you have any cross-examination questions for Ms. Met Sanchi?
Yes, a couple.
Okay, please go ahead and as necessary, please let us know and we can put exhibits up on the screen.
Was, well, you could put up my exhibit 22.
Okay, let's put up EV 22 on the screen. Put it up on my screen here too, if I can get it.
It's the highlighted section.
Okay, so first of all, Mr. Voice, why don't you say what this is and what, and ask Ms. Sanchi if she recognizes this document?
It's, it's Article 6, Section 1, execution of instruments from the park's bylaws, their corporate bylaws.
Okay, so for, so just first ask Ms. Sanchi if she recognizes this and then you can ask her her question.
I have not seen this before, no.
Okay, so Mr. Voice, you can try to ask her a question, but I don't know that she's going to be able to answer it if she's never seen this document before.
Well, what it, what it pertains to is on the annexation consent agreement and covenant, there's only one signature on this document, which is signed by Laura Cochran as Executive Director, Southern Humboldt Community Park. Are you familiar with that?
With regard to the signatures, yes, I am, I recognize that there was one signature on the agreement.
And on that agreement, it says owner. The undersigned certified to be owner of the real property included within the boundary of the real property described in this agreement. And only one person whose consent is necessary to pass title to said real property. Are you familiar with that?
Sorry.
We can put up that exhibit if we need to.
So, yeah, that could be helpful. So I, what I'm reading is that the board, the park's bylaws have particular instructions for who can sign. And so again, I'm not, I am, you know, it's the, the park and whoever is authorized. And it says unless so authorized. So if the board authorizes Laura Cochran, then we just required a signature.
Right, but in those execution of instruments, it says that they would need to have a resolution by the park board to have one person represent them. Did you get a resolution from the park board stating Laura Cochran to sign this agreement and it can pass title to said property?
No, I did not.
Okay. Oh crap, I just lost my paperwork. In your written testimony, which is highlighted, the second paragraph down, it says the meter would be limited to providing 2,000.
Let's, let's go ahead, excuse me, let's, Ms. Mullin, please put back up GSD 13. Okay, make the second paragraph bigger. Mr. Voice, your question was about the second paragraph, I believe?
Right, almost dead center in the middle. It says, "This meter will be limited to providing 2,000 cubic feet per month, subject to other conditions set forth in GSD Resolution 1902." So my question is, it's, is it, is, what you're saying is it's limited to providing 2,000 cubic feet a month. Is that statement true?
For purposes of, yes, the limit, the limitation that was spoken of earlier by Jenny Short in explaining that, that was both proposed by the district. So just kind of again, providing some context. In Garberville Sanitary District's application to LAFCO, they proposed the 2,000 cubic feet per month as for, for the water usage and included those, those other conditions that were described by Jenny. And there was a draft agreement provided in our application that was already, you know, reviewed by both Garberville Sanitary District and the park and, you know, all legal counsel. So all of that had been vetted prior to submitting their application to LAFCO. And so the request was to be consistent with these, these limitations of water usage. So I'm, I'm summarizing it without going into detail in my testimony. But again, it's consistent with the constraints proposed by Garberville Sanitary District on the location of service and then also the monthly quantity of water. So again, we're, we were consistent throughout.
Thank you. So in GSD Resolution 1902, item E on page three, it states that the meter will be shut off if the use- the meter will be shut off if the usage is more than 1.5 times 3,000 cubic feet a month allowable quantity for any two months in a 12-month period.
So let's, excuse me, is that, Mr. Voice, is that the resolution you're now referring to?
Right, it's GSD's Resolution 1902.
Okay, so Ms. Mullen, please put up exhibit GSD 10. It's just to help Ms. Metz Sanchi if she can see the documents you're talking about.
No problem.
And then what page do you want to go to on this one?
Three.
Okay, so Ms. Mullen, go to page three.
It's item E.
And make, middle of the page, make item paragraph E bigger. This is conditions of approval, I believe. So now ask your question again.
So in this document that you're quoting in your testimony, it states that the limit isn't 2,000 cubic feet a month, it's 3,000 cubic feet a month. Is that true?
My understanding, again, this is, was just spoken by Jenny Short, and I think it's pretty clear here, but my reading of this is that the 2,000 cubic feet is the limit and that going over the 2,000 feet per month will, you know, they will notify the property owner and then at 3,000 cubic feet per month, if they do this, if they go over any two months in a 12-month period, then their water will be shut off. So I feel like that's pretty clear and is in the record from Jenny Short.
Right, so what, so when the, do you know what the consequences are? If they exceed 2,000 cubic feet a month and GSD notifies them, do they just send them a letter and say, hey, you went over 2,000?
That would be a great question for Jenny Short. I mean, I would say I would expect that notification would be a written notification in order to document that they provided those notifications. So I would assume it would be written.
So would, do you know what the consequences are though? If they exceed between 2,000 and 3,000 cubic feet a month?
That would again be a great question for Jenny Short in the Garberville Sanitary District. I think she spoke to it, you know, with regard to just being flexible on a month-by-month period, but, and then they evaluated again their water capacity and, you know, the 3,000 cubic feet per month is the, the hard limit and and there would be consequences if they went over that 3,000 cubic feet for any two months in a 12-month period.
That is correct. But what I wonder is how come or why did you only include the 2,000 cubic feet a month caveat instead of limiting it to 3,000 cubic feet a month?
Our, our condition and, you know, that's just my written testimony, which is a, again, just a summary. But the agreement that is between the park and the district, which was part of the record of what was submitted to Lafco in their application and which was reviewed and, and included in the Lafco record is consistent with this language.
So that's why you, you only mentioned the 2,000 cubic feet being the limit, not 3,000 cubic feet being the limit?
Yeah, I was summarizing, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
All right, so Ms. Vogel, do you have any questions for Ms. Metz Sanchi?
No, I don't.
All right, and Ms. Sutton, do you have any questions for Ms. Metz Sanchi?
I do.
Okay, I just unmuted it.
Okay, and so please, let's see if we can get your, better get, I move my tiles here. But Ms. Mullen, you can go ahead and take down this exhibit and we'll go full screen again, so hopefully we can see Ms. Sutton.
My question is, and I'm trying to understand about the annexation process. So my question is, does this action by Lafco take the place of a formal annexation?
It's a really good question. So I can attempt to describe kind of the Lafco authority. So Lafco does review and approve applications for annexation in addition to many different types of changes of organization and reorganization proposed by special districts and cities. So annexation has, you know, particular noticing and hearing requirements in the Cortez-Zinox-Hertzberg Act as well as protest proceedings. And, but there's a special section in the Cortez-Zinox-Hertzberg Act for extensions of services outside of district boundaries when they're proposed. When, when they're proposed in lieu, I guess, of annexation. So yes, annexation is not the, the path that they're requesting from Lafco. It's an out-of jurisdictional service extension. And so this code section is California Government Code 56133. And this section of the Cortez-Zinox-Hertzberg Act outlines the, the requirements when we redo, receive an application from a service provider to extend services. It includes some exemptions. But in this case, you know, Garberville Sanitary District submitted an application to Lafco for the service extension, again, included a very detailed application and a draft service agreement between the two parties.
Thank you, but I'm still not understanding this. If it had been a formal annexation, would there have been more scrutiny to this action?
There, there. The sequa review is, you know, we're, we're looking at the, the provision of service and what's proposed. Annexation would have one thing that we had talked about early on about kind of the difference between the service extension and annexation is if the district had annexed the full Southern Humboldt Community Park property. There's, once it's annexed, they can supply water to their discretion, you know, once, once a property is annexed, there's no limits there, you know, unless there's, you know, unless required, unless required by the district board. But annexation would have required a look at what the service demand and full buildout of the parcel lives. And so this request was really specific again to the proposed constraints of the location of service to those 13 parcels and the monthly quantity of water again. So I, I think with regard to the, your question could probably also go back to Garberville Sanitary District some with regard to why they made the decision about going, requesting a service extension versus requesting annexation. That was a decision on their part ultimately. But you're right in the fact that if annexation was proposed, Lafco would have been looking at full buildout at the land uses that are, at the, at the current land uses for the entire property.
Thank you, and I still have one more question. I appreciate that you distinguished about the annexation, looking at full buildout. But doesn't this, this action open the door to start that buildout with this process?
We felt, you know, very, we feel very confident in the, what's specified in the agreement. It's really, if you read through the agreement between the district and the park, it's really, it's limited to the existing structures within this 13 acres and the, the drinking fountains. And it's very detailed. And with the quantities of water proposed and, and the location of the service. So we felt like it was defined very clearly for us to be able to analyze the effects of that service extension in an addendum.
I'm sorry to keep having these questions, but I do have another one in that I'm trying to understand the difference between new development versus existing development. And when some entity repurposes a building or gives it a different character. I mean, we're looking at houses that are residences, so we're looking at a residential service here, which I think is really important in this area, you know, for all of Humboldt that has such a housing crisis. But once that's repurposed into park headquarters and a commercial kitchen, so it's no longer residential, how can that be accommodated from this agreement?
We look at the use and the, and what's proposed and that the that, you know, it's, it's still on that existing meter as proposed and as long as they stay within the thresholds of the usage. And there's not additional development and, you know, proposed beyond like the existing structures in a change in a use of a structure. As long as it doesn't go past that threshold, isn't something that we care to, that we would request to review again.
Okay, and what is the status of drinking fountains in that they don't exist presently? So that sounds like new development to me. And how does that get reconciled?
And that, that was, the drinking fountains were identified in their application to Lafco, and so we were able to both document and evaluate that, that as a usage as part of what was proposed.
Well, thank you. I still have more questions, but I do appreciate your time and I understand you're on the time, time frame.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Ms. Sutton. So Ms. Metz Sanchi, I, I do have a follow-up question. What will happen, what will Lafco do? If anything, if, assuming this agreement is implemented, that the state water board approves the, the change in the authorized place of use. So, and this connection is made, let's just say hypothetically, there is a month where the deliveries of water from the district to the park go above the 2,000 cubic feet, let's say there's still less than 3,000. But would Lafco do anything, or I should say, what would Lafco do if the monthly deliveries in some month went over 2,000?
Lafco really has no regulatory authority in that way. We, we asked to be notified with regard to these conditions and kept in a loop and Garberville Sanitary District has always done that with, for us. But we, we don't have any ability to find or to provide any penalties. And that's why I think that it's important in that agreement that, you know, the 3,000 and then shutting off water if it happens more than two months of a year. I mean, that's their, that's the district's ability to stop the, that usage, that, that quantity of usage if it goes over that amount. So that's why we like to see that, those conditions and restrictions.
Okay, so the sequa project that Lafco analyzed in the addendum, did it provide for any exceedances of the 2,000 cubic feet per month?
I believe that it was clearly described in the addendum about what was proposed. But I would have to go back and I don't know offhand, I apologize.
Okay, but whatever it says in the addendum, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just say, since the state water board is a sequa responsible agency, our approval is limited to the project that was described in the addendum, but it's probably best, unless you have any elaboration on that, we will just stick with the written words in the addendum unless you have anything you want to elaborate on.
Agreed. Agreed, we just, we, I would just want to add that we, you know, really tried to document the record in the addendum, what was approved and proposed by the Garberville Sanitary District and and so we tried our best to really document the record in the addendum. And so hopefully, and I, I hope that that's really clear.
Okay.
I have one follow-up question, if I may. It's short, sweet.
We're not quite there yet, but we will get there soon. So first of all, I'm going to ask Ms. Short, you're next up, if you have any redirect, any questions that have come up from the cross-examination questions that you would like to ask. So Ms. Short, do you have any follow-up questions on redirect?
Well, I'll ask your question about the sequa document more specifically with an exhibit and page number, so maybe we can get collective. Metz to provide an answer. Sequa Exhibit 18 is Lafco's addendum.
Please, please put up sequa 18, exhibit sequa 18, page six.
If you go to the very bottom of page six.
Give her a minute, she's, she's fast, but she's not perfect.
She is very fast, I'm impressed.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go to the, let her, let her scroll down to the bottom of page six and then enlarge.
Yeah. And enlarge on E there.
Okay, so maybe, yeah, that's good. So we can see the whole paragraph, this is the section headed Restrictions on Water Use. And then it describes what the GSD Board of Directors has approved. So please go ahead and ask your question.
So the project as described in this sequa document is contained in this section and you listed here the restrictions on water use. And you recite exactly what's in Resolution 19 dash, it should be 02, not 12. But item number E that you list there at the bottom of page six and the top of page seven reiterates the 3,000 cubic feet per month. Based on what you see here, can you confirm for Mr. Lilly that the sequa analysis did go clear up to the 3,000 cubic feet per month?
And Ms. Mullen, before I answer Ms. Sanchi's, why don't, look at paragraph E and then when you're ready, ask Ms. Mullen, it's still scroll to the next page, so you can read all of paragraphs.
I was just going to ask her to scroll to the next page.
Okay.
I see the 3,000 cubic feet and the allowable quantity for any two months in a 12-month period. That the meter would be shut off. So yes, correct.
So I'm sorry, Ms., that was a long lead up to your question. So Ms. Short, please just state your question again, so I have a clear question and answer on the record.
My question is just if Ms. Metz can confirm for the state water board that the Lafco document, that the Lafco sequa addendum did included analysis of up to the 3,000 cubic feet per month conditions that are consistent with the water service agreement.
Okay, Ms. Sanchi, what's your answer? Okay, so, so Ms. Sanchi, do you consider this paragraph E to be part of the project description for this addendum?
Correct.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Short, any other redirect questions?
I do not have any other redirect questions.
All right, so we will go to recross. Mr. Voice, you said you had one short question, so please go ahead and if you need to, we'll put up another document.
Yes, on, let's see. My exhibit six.
Okay, so let's, we'll put up exhibit EV six. And then what page would you like us to go to?
Should be just the highlighted portion. Should be just the highlighted portion.
Okay, and then and just to state for the record, it appears that this document is an excerpt. Of from the um, the Sequa Addendum, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so Ms. Ms. Matt Sanchez, do you recognize this as part of the Lafco Sequa Addendum?
I believe so.
All right, so go go ahead, Mr. Voice, and you can ask your question about this highlighted text.
To um. This is where it talks about as a part of this addendum, the uh. Cumulative impacts. Analysis were taken into consideration. For future prod projects. That's all I wanted to establish is, is that correct?
Um, I believe that um. That refers to the 2013 initial study MND, just documenting that in that initial study. MND that they did evaluate cumulative of um. Impacts in that, and so we did review that section.
And that is what.
As part of our addendum.
Okay, good, correct. Thank you. Um, so if you could pull up my Exhibit 7.
Okay, we'll get, Ms. Mullen will get up EV7.
Okay, this is, this is, this is the actual page that shows. The cumulative impacts analysis from the 2013 Annexation GSD. ISMND, it's highlighted right there.
Okay, so first of all, before you ask a question, Ms. Sanchez, this is just one page. It looks like it's from the. 2013 ISMND. Do you recognize this?
Uh, yes, the SHN document, correct.
Okay, so Mr. Voice, go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, so in the section that's highlighted. Is is that what you're quoting from in the addendum? That shows that the cumulative impacts were analyzed?
Um, no, I'm stating in general. That there was a cumulative impact section in the 2013 Initial Study MND. And that um, those were considered as part, there was a section on cumulative impacts in. This and in that initial study MND. I'm not.
Right, that's that's.
I'm not, I'm not referring to a single sentence there.
Okay, but that is the the cumulative impact section for the park. In the 2013 Annexation ISMND. So what I'm asking you is. Is that the conclusion the addendum made when you stated? That uh cumulative impacts. Were addressed in the. Addendum, the 2019 Addendum ISMND.
Mr. Voice, my. It's not only for the park, and so that's really important distinction and I I, that's a great question. Is that when you're looking at cumulative impacts, you're looking at many projects that are being proposed in the area. At the time of um, a project um, in in consideration. So I, I think it's um. Again, Lafco look, review the cumulative impact analysis in the 2013 Initial Study MND. Um, which included the this section on the Southern Humboldt Community Park project that existed at that time. And their their approvals and that were uh for their. Uh, for their general plan amendment and rezon with the county. That was just one of the projects evaluated in the cumulative impact section. I hope that helps clarify.
Not really, but let me continue. Um, in this section for cumulative impacts from the 2013 Annexation Document. Um, it also says. Give me one second here. It says that they were. That they that they didn't know. At the time of 2013 Annexation. They they did not know how much water the park would be using. Or where they would be using it at. So my question is, do you consider that to be a cumulative impact?
I can't respond to that question at this time. I just, I I'm not really sure what the question is and how that pertains to cumulative impacts.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to assess is.
That this section, uh, this section of the 2013 Initial Study MND summarized. Where the park was at the time with their um, application with Humboldt County Planning and Building Department. And a lot has happened since then. That's all I can say.
Correct. So in the addendum. In in the 2019 Addendum ISMND. Was that proposed anywhere in that document?
What was proposed?
That it was, it was clear and cut. How much water and how much and where that water would be used on the park versus back in 2013.
No, because, that's a great question. And no, because the addendum was analyzing the particular. Proposed water usage to the um, location of service proposed, the 13 acres. And, you know, the quantity. So we, we didn't look at, again, our addendum was focused on the. Project description, not on what was analyzed by and and approved as as part of the whole. Park proposal with the county for their general plan and land use. It's very particular to what was proposed as part of this extension. So I hope that clarifies.
A little bit, um, but in in your, in your written testimony, it specifically names. This document was analyzed and I'm trying to assess why, how could you identify or or?
It's an addendum to this document, so um. Again, our addendum. Further analyzed what was proposed by Garberville Sanitary District and their proposed. Um, water extension to the park and we um. The addendum, what, you know, the addent, the Sequa document was an addendum. To the 2013 Initial Study MND.
Correct. That was, that was kind of where I was going is is that this is. So you didn't analyze cumulative impacts. After the park. Got their uh, general plan amendment and EIR approved. It only came from. Uh, the 2013 Annexation ISMND?
We found that this section of the addendum was sufficient with regard to um, the cumulative impact analysis. But what we did is clarify in the record in the project description, um, you know, what has happened. Um, we, there, there's significant record in our project description about um, the approvals. And um, where the park was um, with their um. The approvals from Humboldt County Planning and Building Department with their general plan amendment and rezon. So that was. Um, described in there. So again, you have to look at the full addendum to um. It it, it clarifies the record with regard to supplementing the 2013 Initial Study MND.
So excuse me, Ms. Sanchez, I'm gonna just interrupt. I think you misspoke. Um, you said that the, the ISMND, excuse me, you said the addendum concluded the. Cumulative impact analysis in the addendum was sufficient. I I think what you meant was. The addendum concluded that the cumulative impact analysis in the ISMND was sufficient. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Sorry if I misspoke. Thank you.
So for that reason, you did not, that the addendum did not update the cumulative impact analysis from the 2013 ISMND. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Voice, if you have anything else, you may continue. I think you've handled this pretty well.
I'm done.
Okay, all right. So does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Mets Sanchez? Then we're we're gonna let you go back to your other duties right on time. I'm sorry, somebody else had another question for her?
Yes, this is Linda. And I have put my hand up, but if she has left the room.
No, no, she's still here. Ms. Mullen, please take down the exhibit so we can go back to full screen. And then, so sorry, Ms. Mets Sanchez, you're not quite done. Um, so Ms. Let's see, where are we? Ms. Sutton, you have a follow up question. It's gotta be limited to what's.
I have a follow up question, which pertains to the statement that just made, if I understand correctly. There Lafco is saying they accepted. The the um cumulative impacts as noted in 2013. And when the 2013 document was added to. They thought it was sufficient, they added, made some changes, but they thought it was sufficient in terms of the. Accumulative impacts. I don't understand that because she. I um, heard correctly, she did say, you know. They look at a lot of other projects and then noted, a lot has been happening in this area. So why wouldn't the cumulative impacts? Uh, evaluation be updated? As the years go by, or is that not done?
Okay, so I think that's a fair question. Just when you talked about the changes from 2013 to 2019. Why did you conclude that, why did Lafco concluded to not need to update the 2013 cumulative impact analysis?
Good question. Um. I think that, you know, reviewing the cumulative impact analysis, um, you know, the projects that were included in there. Are are still relevant and the one project that I was referring to that we documented in detail. Is the Southern Humboldt Community Park property. And in the cumulative impact analysis that um, and you saw Ed Voice had that section up. That was inherently updated in our um, addendum. Because that was the focus of the service extension. And so, but beyond that, the projects and the cumulative impact analysis that was included in the 2013. Uh, addendum was was still sufficient.
Okay, so Ms. Sutton, does that answer your question?
Not really.
Well, I think she explained, I mean, do you have, well, I'll just say, do you have any follow up questions?
Well, I just have to say that as someone who supports. And advocates for. Water usage to be very careful.
Wait, 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 wait. At this point, we're talking questions, not statements. Do you have a question?
I'm trying to phrase it that when we keep looking at water usage. How often do we have to update it as it relates? To the current. Changes in weather and climate change and a very low river.
Okay, that's a fair question. I I guess in the context of the 2019. Addendum, Ms. Mets Sanchez, can you answer that question as to whether updates were necessary?
Um. I can't. I mean, I again, our addendum is really focused on the proposed project at hand. And the. You know, the, again, the proposed services, the location and the quantity. Um, that was fully analyzed um, and evaluated. Um, what she spoke of with regard to, you know, her concerns and valid concerns about the river and the flows. And that was beyond the scope of our addendum and the proposed project.
All right, Ms. Sutton, do you have any further questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
All right, so uh, Ms. Mullen, please put up Exhibit Sequa 18. We're almost done, Ms. Sanchez, but I have a couple of follow up questions.
Sounds great.
And and we'll go to Page 18. So it's Exhibit Sequa 18, Page 18. See if I've got this. Yes, so if you can zoom in on the 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 bottom half of the page. Okay, there's a, the the big paragraph there. It talks about the. Water supply demand analysis in the 2016 EIR. Uh, and then. It's, it says in the middle of the page. Um, the total annual demand without irrigation is estimated at 6, 7, 9,008, 28 gallons. Do you see that?
I do.
Um, and this is Lafco document, I realize it's a detailed document, but do you know where that number came from? I I went back to the 2016 EIR. I could not find this number or how it was calculated.
And I don't have that in front of me, um, the calculation and, you know, it's been so long. I I would have to go back as well and, but I could find that out.
Okay, here's what. You know, it's, it's, it's important and and I need to know. So here's what we'll do. I I've, I've asked Ms. Short and she thought she might be able to tell us that calculation. And if she can do that. And testify to that after lunch break, that's fine. But if not, uh, we may just uh, send you a letter and ask you if you can just respond to that with a letter. I assume you could check. Is that, could you check and find out?
Yes.
Okay, if we need to, we will. And then just the last question I have with the addendum, was there a, any legal challenge filed in court? Uh, to Lafco's 2019 addendum?
No.
Okay, so I assume that the period statute of limitations has run on any uh, time for legal challenges. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so. All right, Ms. Mullen, go ahead and take this uh, exhibit down. And we'll go back to full screen. I'm sorry, sorry, somebody have a follow up question?
Yes, Mr. Lily, this is Mr. Anderson. Um, it appears Mr. Woolridge found a table. Um, that explains where the number of question came from.
Okay, why don't we go ahead? Can you put that up and we'll ask Ms. Sanchez before we let you go? Um, if you, can you put that table up and we can see that might just take care of this right now and save follow up? And we will mark this as an exhibit after we get it up there.
Yep. Mr. Lily, give us one minute. We, I need Mr. Woolridge to tell Mrs. Mullen which exhibit this is. And then we can bring up the exhibit.
We do pretty well considering we're all in different locations, but there's some challenges versus if we're all.
I'm impressed.
Um, we do the best we can. So just bear with us for a moment here.
Okay, uh, Ms. Mullen, this is Kyle Wildridge, uh, in the Sequa Documents folder. We're looking for the 2016 Draft YR.
Okay, that's probably Sequin 9, is that?
Yes.
Okay, let's see if we can put up Sequin 9. It's a long file. It may take a minute to load, but we should be able to get it loaded here. And I hope you know what page to go to, because this document has 854 pages.
So start, get to six, page 623. And start scrolling down from there and we're looking for Table 9.
Okay, so this is Appendix G to the. 2016 EIR prepared by the county. And we're going to Table 9. We're getting there.
Okay, so so Table 9, it, those, those two numbers, the the 673,000 and the. Is it 11.5 million? They don't actually show up, but they are the sum total of the columns. For the whole year.
Okay, for for which, for which row, for potable or for, this also looks like irrigation here.
Yeah, so the 11.5 million includes irrigation and 673 does not include irrigation.
Okay.
679.
All right, so um, and we certainly can follow up on this as necessary, but. This, for Ms. Mets Sanchez, is this, is this, is this the place where your understanding is that Lafco went to to get the? to get the, the numbers to calculate that number, the 679828? Okay, all right. Well, I won't, I won't put you on the spot and ask you to do all the arithmetic right here. Uh, but it, it looks like we think we can determine, you go ahead and take that exhibit down now. Thank you, Ms. Mullen. Um, it looks like we can figure it out. Um, as I say, I'm gonna keep my, my request open if we need to, to have you, uh, answer that question. Since it is a LAFCO document, you're the best person to answer.
Yeah, my pleasure.
And if necessary, we'll send you a letter on that. All right, is there anything else that anybody would like to ask or cover with Ms. Metz Sanchez today, or could she leave?
I just had one, just one little question. When you just.
All right, make, make sure it's just one, but go ahead.
Just one, just one. On that exhibit you just showed, that was a, uh, water consumption study that was done by, uh, GHD. That's one of two water consumption studies that was done for the EIR, the park's EIR. So I'm not sure if anyone knew that, that there was also a water study analysis made by Pacific Watershed Associates for the EIR.
Okay, so turn this into a question, please. Questions. So is, you're just talking now. Question, what's your question?
Which document were you quoting from that you just showed? Which, which of the two, uh, water source and water consumption documents were used for your addendum?
I was just responding to the, the table that was brought up, and it is referenced in the, uh, 2013, or in the county's EIR. Um, I, again, maybe this, this would be something that I can look into and follow up with.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Voice, if, yeah. Excuse me, Mr. Voice, it does say who the author of that study was in Appendix G, so I think this is in the record.
Right, but there is a second one that was also done and reviewed by the county, uh, for the 2016 Park EIR.
Okay, well, that's evidence you can put forth. I don't think that's within Ms. Sanchez's area of testimony because she's with LAFCO, not with the county.
Okay.
So I think if there's a separate study and you want to make a point about that, that's certainly appropriate. But I don't, if there's something that's appropriate to ask Ms. Sanchez, she can tell me about what LAFCO did, but not what the county did.
Okay.
All right, so with that, um, I think, yes, anything else? One last time before she leaves. Ms. Metz, uh, any other questions for Ms. Metz Sanchez? All right, so you are dismissed. Um, thank you very much for appearing today, and your schedule worked out well. Uh, before we break for lunch, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we break for lunch, we did have, he seems to have disappeared. We did have somebody who wanted to make the policy statement here. Doctor.
Doctor Sett wasn't able to stay on the line. He would like to try to come back at 1:00 PM if possible to make his statement.
Okay, we're gonna break till 1:15. Uh, he can come back then. And if, and you can tell him if he can, and I understand he's busy and, you know, he has other duties. So either he can come back at 1:15, or if that doesn't work for him, uh, he certainly can still submit his, his written statement into the record, and we will consider it, even if he can't orally summarize that. So we'll have those options. But I, we've gone for three hours and 15 minutes without any breaks. So I do want to take a full one-hour break here before we come back, uh, so that, that will be our schedule. Can you tell him that?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, so when we come back, uh, if he, if the doctor's available, uh, he can give a brief summary, up five minutes maximum of his policy statement. And if he's not, as I say, we'll handle that as a written statement. Uh, we will then handle, uh, processing of the Garberville Sanitary District exhibits. And then we will move on to the next case, which will be the Southern Humboldt Community Park case. Uh, one reminder, my staff has reminded me, um, please, everybody, you have to log off to this Zoom call, uh, because we have a different recording for the afternoon. Uh, you log back on using the same login info, but please make sure you all log out. And then sometime before 1:15, you know, like, you know, 10 or 15 minutes before that, go ahead and log back on, and you'll go into the waiting room, and then we'll let you all back in, uh, to the meeting at 1:15 promptly. So with that, unless there's any, anything else before the break? Okay, hearing nothing, we will, uh, all reconvene at 1:15, and log off and log back on. See you then. Bye.